Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, June 18th, 2024. On behalf of the members of the school board and Dr. Mitchell, I welcome each of you present this evening and those who are watching on TV and online. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and pledge of the flag. Here to do the honors is Nina Farish, our Director of Human Resources.
I am honored to share the invocation and lead the pledge of allegiance. For the invocation, I am reading a poem titled "Believe in Yourself." Believe in yourself and all you want to be. Do not let what other people say or do make you frown. Laugh as much as possible. Let in the good times and get through the bad. The longer you practice the habit of working toward your dreams, the easier the journey will become. You were meant for great things. Always follow your dreams. Please join me in standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to make an acknowledgement. I think we have one of our councilmen here in the building with us. Hello, John Ely. Don't you wish you were still up here with us? We miss you, but we're proud of the work that you're doing for the city. Thank you very much for that. Okay, well, Dr. Mitchell, I think we have some school board recognitions to go do. Will you join me at the podium?
I have the honor of presenting our recognition this evening, and it is an acknowledgement of service for Erin Lynn, the student representative to the school board. In honor of his distinguished service to the school board and Newport News Public Schools, he's receiving a resolution, an award, and a gift. The resolution reads in part, "Newport News School Board Resolution of Recognition Presented to Erin Lynn, the 2023-2024 Student Representative to the Newport News School Board. Whereas the Newport News School Board approved in 2004 the creation of the position of student representative to the school board to increase board awareness of the views of students and to provide a peer with whom students could share ideas for improving education. And whereas Erin Lynn, a senior at Woodside High School, was elected according to the approved procedures by the members of the Student Advisory Group on Education. Whereas Mr. Lynn served in this capacity from July 2023 through June 2024 faithfully attending meetings of the school board. And whereas Mr. Lynn served as facilitator to the Superintendent's High School Advisory Group on Education meetings. And whereas Mr. Lynn sought student ideas on educational issues and pursued information and experiences that would assist his efforts to provide valuable insights during the discussion of school board meeting agenda items. And whereas Mr. Lynn diligently fulfilled all the duties of the position of student representative while also continuing to excel in his advanced coursework and being named as a Gates Scholar, serving as the co-founder of Students Say, a club dedicated to developing future leaders, a member of the math and music honor societies, the archery club, and the Williamsburg Youth Orchestra, and volunteering for several community organizations. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Newport News School Board that Erin Lynn is to be highly commended for exemplary service, dedication, and commitment during his tenure as a student representative to the school board. And it says, "In witness thereof, we are here to set our hands," and it is signed on the 18th day of June 2024 by each member of the school board and the superintendent. Congratulations and thank you for your service. And joining him tonight is his principal, Dr. Mary Hardesty from Woodside. Thank you for joining us. And the family and friends watching, and I did want to mention too that Mr. Lynn has been accepted to Yale University in the fall. And he plans to study economics and statistics. He's interested, he says, in financial analysis and how nonprofit organizations in communities help under-resourced students. So again, thank you one more time for your service to Newport News Public Schools. Her agenda will continue.
Some personnel appointments to do. So do we have a motion for those appointments?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for Dr. Kelly Mason, Secondary Leadership Administrator-Coach, Tara Chalmers-Harris, Elementary Leadership Coach, and Tiffany Thompson, Principal, Warwick High School.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Four.
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 Four. Four. Great. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you very much. It gives me great pleasure to introduce our new appointees. I would like to introduce Ms. Tara Chalmers-Harris, and if she is in the room, she's all the way in the back, as an Elementary Leadership Administrator-Coach. Ms. Chalmers-Harris has a postgraduate degree in Educational Administration from Old Dominion University. She currently works as the principal of an Achievable Dream Academy. She has worked as an assistant principal as well as an instructional coach, both here in Newport News Public Schools. Congratulations, Ms. Chalmers-Harris. Ms. Chalmers-Harris, do you have anyone with you here tonight?
I do. I have my husband.
And if you would like to introduce your husband? Congratulations. Next, I would like to introduce Dr. Kelly Mason as the Secondary Leadership Administrator-Coach. Dr. Mason has a PhD in Educational Leadership from Old Dominion University. She currently works as the principal of Warwick High School. She has worked as a principal, high school assistant principal, an instructional specialist, high school teacher, middle school teacher, all in Virginia Beach. Congratulations, Dr. Mason. Dr. Mason, do you have someone with you tonight that you would like to introduce?
I have my husband, Dr. Richard Mason. And most of you on the board already know.
We were actually going to say, "Welcome to the boardroom here, Dr. Mason." He is the chair of the Hampton City School Board.
And next, I would like to introduce Ms. Tiffany Thompson as the new principal of Warwick High School. Ms. Thompson has her Master of Education Leadership from Regent University. She currently works as an Assistant Principal of Instruction at Heritage High School. She has also worked as an Assistant Principal at Denby High School, a Spark Summer School Administrator, a Science Lead Teacher at Woodside High School, and a Science Teacher in Charlottesville. Congratulations, Ms. Thompson. Ms. Thompson, do you have someone with you tonight that you would like to introduce?
I do. I have my son with me, Aaron Michael. I have my uncle. My parents are watching via live stream in Kentucky. And then I have my extended family, Jimmy and Tanya and Mary. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. Let us be the first to welcome you. We're glad to have you in our Newport News Public Schools family. We are going to take a short break for the school board spotlight, and it also gives those who are here visiting and getting their recognitions for personnel appointments, get their celebrations started a little early. So, thank you all. We'll take a moment of a break.
For the first year ever, Newport News Public Schools provided football for middle school student athletes. After a month of practices through March, boys and girls from all eight middle schools competed against one another during Saturday games held at various high school fields across the city. The teams looked sharp in their brand-new uniforms, as coaches worked diligently on building fundamental skills, knowledge, and techniques for the many athletes taking their first strides into organized football. Middle school football took place in the spring instead of the traditional fall season, so it wouldn't interfere with the high school football schedule. After a six-week regular season, the four top teams from the northern and southern divisions competed in two semifinal games held at Todd Stadium. The winning teams that advanced to the city championship game were the Ella Fitzgerald Jazz against the Huntington Vikings. At halftime, the Vikings were up eight to six, as the teams prepared for a rain-soaked second half. The Jazz controlled the ball for most of the second half, scoring the go-ahead touchdown until the Vikings made a spectacular passing touchdown to take the lead back. Quarterback Zaire White-Epps connected with wideout Roderick Perry for a 60-yard touchdown. Huntington's defense held strong, keeping the Jazz out of the end zone to secure a 16-12 victory for the mighty Vikings, who will forever be the first NNP S Middle School Football Champions. Head coach Ray Malone and his coaching staff encouraged the young student athletes to believe in themselves, give it their all, and, number one rule, just have fun. When Huntington started together three months ago with their first practice, they finished in style, earning the mighty Vikings the citywide trophy. While our classroom teachers are at the forefront of educating our students daily, there is an army of talented and caring professionals who support the learning process with their unique skills and dedication. At the Newport News Marriott at City Center, deserving employees were recognized for their service at the exemplary Support Staff of the Year Awards Banquet. Representing every NNP S school and seven administrative departments, 49 employees were recognized by school leaders, the school board, and elected officials for their efforts in keeping our schools operating smoothly, creating safe learning environments, and assisting teachers and students with classroom learning. While many of these jobs happen behind the scenes, this evening was an opportunity to recognize their unwavering support. Those being honored included instructional assistants, security officers, administrative secretaries, custodians, technology support specialists, and a range of other positions that are crucial to ensuring that over 25,000 students receive the attention and care needed so that all students graduate college, career, and citizen-ready. Many times, in science and in life, mistakes and failures lead to amazing breakthroughs and discoveries. That's why Minchville High School's lead science teacher, Ashley Jassard, empowers her students to learn from their mistakes, problem-solve, and embrace the scientific quest for answers. This school year, Minchville students enrolled in honors molecular cell biology, spent the first semester learning about biochemistry, various lab techniques, and the inquiry nature of the scientific process. After harnessing these college-level concepts, the students moved on to honors research and applications in cellular processes, which focuses on research design, applied math and statistics, and a culminating student-led research project. In groups, students were free to pick their own topic for their research project, as long as the answers weren't readily available through a quick online search engine. Meaning, these students had 12 weeks to form a question about molecular cells that hadn't been answered before, research their topic with related literature, create their own procedures to gather results, and then present their findings formally. The four student groups decided to use zebrafish to conduct four different studies, including the implications of steroids on the health of the heart, the effect of alcohol on the neurological development of embryos, how motor functions are affected by common substances consumed by teenagers, including nicotine, red dye 3, and caffeine, and if certain antihistamines could improve the symptoms of Parkinson's disease. Zebrafish are widely used for biomedical research and neurological observations, since they share genetic similarities with humans. Also, their embryos and larvae are transparent, allowing direct observation of brain development, and they grow quickly, enabling efficient and timely studies. With their topics chosen, the teams had to design, plan, budget, and then run their experiments. Two to three days after the zebrafish embryos were fertilized, the student scientists introduced foreign substances such as ethanol, caffeine, growth hormones, and neurotoxins to create drug-induced symptoms of Parkinson's disease. With no lab sheet or discussion questions to guide their exploration, students relied on trial and error, learned from mistakes and miscalculations, and dealt with time and budget constraints. Jassard gave the students complete ownership of their projects, as they experienced the highs and lows of lab work. But these dedicated, focused, and driven students were undeterred in their quest to complete the challenge placed before them. Even when high amounts of caffeine killed the zebrafish, or the timing of the administered substances had to be recalculated, these students rose to the occasion. Five days after the zebrafish hatched, the teams recorded observations, collected data, and began analyzing their findings. They carefully transported each larva into multi-well plates to examine them individually. Using a dissecting microscope, the teams recorded data that was particular to their topic, such as heart rate, deformities, and speed of movement. The final hurdle was writing a research paper and presenting their conclusions to an audience of school leaders, science educators, and family members, allowing the skills learned in these courses to move beyond the sciences, as students learned the value of communication, collaboration, and public speaking. Unfortunately, lab research of this type is not cheap. Since these courses began in 2017, primary funding has come through grants and donations. This year, NNP S Superintendent Dr. Michelle Mitchell helped secure the additional funding to offer students a rich and beneficial learning experience. Through this intensive, lab-based research project, these Minchville students gained far more than content knowledge. Instead, they acquired real-world science skills and a higher level of critical thinking to prepare them for immediate success in college and a variety of careers in STEM-related fields. Every week, Newport News Public Schools educators and staff are invited to participate in after-school activities to build physical and mental wellness. As part of the school-wide NNP S Wellness Program, every school encourages employees and their families to move, eat, think, and be well. To make this happen, wellness leads are selected at each school to motivate and engage staff through coordinated events and to share helpful information about healthy living. For all their efforts and extra work after hours, these wellness leads earn a stipend, and each school has allotted limited funds to make these activities fun, engaging, and meaningful for all employees. At Gildersleeve Middle School, history teacher Kristen Stallard invites the Seahawk staff to create and paint their own pottery. This creative outlet is a wonderful experience for educators to share their hidden artistic talents while bonding as a team. Professional school counselor Karen Steele organized a week-long Biggest Loser Challenge at Haydenwood Elementary. Staff were welcomed to stay late on certain days to work out together and burn some extra calories while motivating one another on their quest to get fit. Rich Neck Elementary's student support specialist, Sanja Tatum, worked with archery coach Lindsay Sessions to offer after-school archery lessons for their school staff. This offered a fun and challenging fitness activity that brought the staff closer together as they worked to hit the bullseye. Mitzi Imbleach, music teacher at Riverside Elementary, offers a variety of fun activities with the purpose of offering staff a mental refresher. Whether it's painting beautiful landscapes or cuddling with therapy dogs, the Riverside staff love to end their day relaxing and unwinding. And at Warwick High School, Administrative Secretary Rose Baker invites extreme hip-hop step on select Mondays to get the Copeland crew moving, stepping, and dancing during a high-intensity and fun workout session. Either through engaging physical fitness options or relaxing creative activities, wellness leads across Newport News Public Schools are encouraging their coworkers to grow physically and mentally as they work daily to educate all students.
I hope everyone enjoyed this month's school board spotlight. During our regular meetings, we provide time for the public to address the school board. These opportunities are scheduled in the early part of our agenda and towards the end of the meeting. And I will make a comment this evening that the first section of comments to the school board will last just 30 minutes, and they are, it's strictly for Newport News residents. Everyone who is here, who has turned in a card this evening, will get the opportunity to speak. We just need to take care of school business while we have the attention of our, of our audience. So as advertised, citizens may submit comments via email up to 30 minutes prior to our meeting time to be included in the official meeting record. For those of you joining us in person, the board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your concerns. We ask that you comply with our three-minute time limit. As you begin your comments, a green light will come on, a yellow light signals you have 30 seconds remaining, and a red light and beep indicates your time is up. As your name is called, please come forward. The first one is Reverend Dr. Tremaine Johnson.
I would ask that our pastors join us tonight. To everybody else, good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair, and all that are gathered tonight. I'm going to also ask that if the principal of Heritage is here, and also the band director, they would join us as well. Tonight, we stand together. I want to quote William Butler Yeats, "Says that education is not the filling of a pale, but the lighting of a fire." And so tonight, we come to just put more oil on the fire. We've heard of Heritage High School's opportunity to attend the parade in Rome, Italy, and we wanted to make this a possibility for them. After hearing it, we've come together with our member churches, organizations that have helped us to raise the amount of money of our goal to make sure that they get to Rome, Italy. And so tonight, we want to present this check to Heritage High School in the amount of $50,000. So on behalf of the Coalition of Concerned Clergy and those who've joined together to make this happen, we want to make sure that you receive the amount of money so that you can live the dream that you all have been talking about, and you can get there and represent Newport News in a great way. Thank you.
Thank you for supporting our children.
We wanted to make sure we get this.
Maxwell.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate you. We appreciate you, guys. Thank you so much. God bless you. Thank you. Thanks for helping our kids. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. One more, one more. Get your picture. Get your picture.
That's love right there.
That is. That is. I'm going to call three cards at once, and then that way we can kind of load the queue. Reverend Natalie Chamberlain will come first, Michelle Nordine, and then Jonathan Waldron.
Good evening. I'm Reverend Natalie Chamberlain. My pronouns are she and her, and I'm the pastor of Hilton Christian Church. As a congregation, we strive to be radically welcoming and inclusive. Our denomination, the Christian Church Disciples of Christ, strives to be a movement for wholeness in our fragmented world. We choose to welcome all, as God has welcomed us. And I want to begin by letting you know that the flowers are a gift from the Tidewater DSA. Each one is a beautiful bouquet, but each one is different, and we wanted to let you know that that is the way we look at the people of this world. Each one beautiful, and each one different. I am here to address the policy concerning trans rights. At least, part of the issue is in the board's lack of process and will to do what is best for children in your care. Put in place the mechanism to monitor policies that directly affect at-risk students, then use that authority to protect trans kids with full human rights, equivalent to that of their peers. It would be easy to address you tonight on theological terms, but the issue before us is not religious or theological. This community, as represented by this board, has a responsibility to care for every student, no matter what we might think of any individual's race, creed, color, gender, or gender identity, and no matter what your religious affiliation may or may not be. If you need a Judeo-Christian foundation for doing the right thing, let it be Jesus' Word summing up Jewish laws. He was asked of the commandments, "Which is the most important?" The most important one answered Jesus is this, "Here, O Israel, the Lord, our God, the Lord is one. Love the Lord, your God, with all your heart, and with all your soul, and with all your mind, and with all of your strength." The second is this, "Love your neighbor as yourself. There is no commandment greater than these." There's nothing that supersedes this law, not any verse taken out of context, not any denominational individual teachings, and not individual dislike. Since Christians, beginning in Paul's time, have done harm and called it love, Paul defines love. Love is patient. Love is kind. Love is not envious, or boastful, or arrogant, or rude. It does not insist on its own way. It is not irritable or resentful. It does not rejoice in wrongdoing, but rejoices in the truth. It bears all things, believes all things, hopes all things, endures all things. Love never ends. But as for prophecies, they will come to an end. As for tongues, they will cease. As for knowledge, it will come to an end. For we know only in part; we prophesy only in part. But when the complete comes, the partial will come to an end. Tonight, I hope you will do the right thing and protect the vulnerable students who should be able to depend on you. Please approve and use the authority. Please approve and use the authority and policy, C.H.
Michelle Nordine.
Good evening, Chairman Sorel's Law, Dr. Mitchell, and school board members. For those who don't know me, my name is Michelle Nordine, and I am the Newport News Council PTA's president. I would like to share some PTA highlights from this school year. I am thrilled to inform you that we finished the year with three thousand one hundred and two, three thousand one hundred and twenty-five PTA members. This is a huge increase from last year where we finished the year with seventeen hundred and fifty PTA members. Based on electronic records, thank you, that go back to twenty nineteen, to the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, we set a new record for PTA membership. Congratulations to all our PTAs for working hard to recruit PTA members. Seven of our local PTAs had one hundred percent teacher membership, with Yates PTA and Gildersleeve PTSA winning the council's Put the T in PTA Membership Challenge in September. Hilton PTA, Huntington PTSA, and Warwick PTSA won the council's Call to Membership Challenge by having the largest percentage of PTA members based on total members of, total number of students. Critidin PTSA met the Student Voice Award Membership Challenge sponsored by Virginia PTA by having student members comprise thirty percent or more of their total membership by December thirty-first. So congratulations, Critidin PTSA. We started two, two brand-new PTAs this year and restarted eleven PTAs to give us a grand total of thirty-five PTAs, active PTAs across the district this year. Council's hoping to add two more next year. We had fifteen reflection entries submitted to council with numerous visual arts and literature entries across all grade levels. Council submitted eight of these entries to Virginia PTA. One entry in literature from Hilton PTA in the pre-k through second-grade division was awarded honorable mention at the state level. Council secretary has challenged our PTAs to double our submissions to council for next year. For those who are interested, next year's reflection theme is Accepting Imperfection. Council awarded one scholarship to a Menchville graduating senior. We are hoping to receive more applications next year. We had four volunteer of the year submissions from our local PTAs, and we forwarded three of them to Virginia PTA. Council handed out, handed out awards to our four volunteers of the year at our May meeting. Also at our May meeting, a full board was elected to the council PTA, and I was elected for my second two-year term. Thank you. I would like to conclude this year in review by thanking everyone who volunteered during the school year at a PTA event, stepped up to be a PTA board member, and everyone who became a PTA member this year. We could not accomplish our mission without your financial support and your gift of time. Thank you for your support in making every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. Thank you.
Ms. Sorel, we need to thank you for all of your dedication to the entire division and getting the parents and families and teachers and students connected. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you. I look forward to working with you guys for another two years, and hopefully we can increase our, continue to increase our membership.
Indeed, thank you. Jackie Batterson is next. After that will be Adam Morrow and Larry Elliott. Oh, after, this one is Jackie Batterson. And then after that will be Adam Morrow and Larry Elliott. Excuse me? Oh, I apologize, I apologize. Mr. Waldron, where is he? Jonathan Waldron.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Good evening, my name is Jonathan, and I'm here to speak in support of Superintendent Dr. Mitchell and the new policies revised by the Virginia Department of Education. Since September of last year until today, I've heard some of the most outrageous claims made about these policies and about members of the community that support these policies, to name a few. We're religious zealots, we're just one church trying to force God on our kids, we promote hate, bullying, and bigotry, basically one major generalization, mischaracterization, and complete lie after another. Read the policy, and you'll find that it protects the student's rights to be a student, the teacher's right to be a teacher, and the parent's right to be a parent. And that's what this whole argument boils down to. At its lowest common denominator, we have one group of people who want to ensure the involvement of the parent in the lives of their children, and one group which wants to pave the road to have the parents escorted out of the room. Now, mind you, when a child is sick, we call the parents; when a child's grades slip up, we call the parents; when a child is hurt or bullied, we call the parents; when a child wants to go on a school trip, permission is given from the parents. But when it's time to take the child behind a closed door and help them sort out their sexual orientation, gender identity, and who they are as a person, one group thinks we ought to keep that hush-hush just in case the parent has an opinion on the matter. The true spirit behind this whole group's agenda was not more perfectly highlighted than the outrage brought against school board member Douglas Brown recently for communicating with a local and thriving church that they can make their premises a place of biblical learning for kids during the week. Without going into strenuous detail, Lifewise Academy is a community-driven opportunity that, wait for it, parents actually get to opt into if they and their child so desire. Imagine that. They attacked a good man whose heart is to see the children in this community learn, grow, and thrive, all things that Lifewise supports, all things that these policies support. For all the talk I've heard from this group of love, compassion, empathy, and tolerance, I've heard more derogatory comments, hateful social media posts, mischaracterizations, and slander from them of other members of this community and this school board, simply because they might have a different viewpoint, perspective, or idea on how best to serve the kids in our schools. In the words of Obi-Wan Kenobi, they have become the very thing they swore to destroy. I would seriously question the motives of anyone advocating for the separation of a child from their parent's influence, and I seriously question the motives of those opposing these policies here tonight. Lastly, know this: No matter what they bring against you, standing with parents' rights is the right choice to make. And those that will be for you are more than those that will stand against you.
Now Jackie Batterson. Thank you. My apologies for that.
Not a problem. As you know, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman, members of the school board, my name is Jackie Batterson, and I am a resident of Newport News. I have spent time studying the mission statement of the school system. And in the School System's Journey 2025 Strategic Plan, it states under student and staff wellness, "Create an environment that promotes social, emotional, and physical well-being for students and employees." I will take that to mean all students. I am going to use the words of Federal Judge Robert Hinkle in his hundred-and-five-page decision ruling against the state of Florida. Some transgender opponents invoke religion to support their position, just as they once used it to support racist and misogynistic beliefs. He states further, "Gender identity is real." He continues, "Whether based on moral, religion, or unmoored hatred, you cannot impede a person from conforming to their gender identity. You may be free to be opposed to trans issues, but you are not free to discriminate against transgender individuals just for being transgender. Please reject Governor Youngkin's discriminatory policy, which target our trans youth in this school system, and follow your own Journey 2025 guidelines to nourish physical, mental, and emotional health of all students." Thank you for your time.
Adam Morrow.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'd say it's a pleasure to be here today, but we've been hammering these points for about nine months now, and it's, I'm beginning to get a little frustrated with the refusal to acknowledge what is demonstrably the popular position of support for transgender students. And one of my fellows made a point that I'd like to address. This was, this happened to someone I met. They came out as gay in their high school, and, but their parents were not necessarily supportive, shall we say, and so they had asked the teachers to keep it quiet. They were willing to be public about it in school, but not necessarily at home because they did not feel safe. Someone in the school district disrespected their wishes. I won't go into too much detail, but there were, I, there were a lot of injuries involved before the student in question was removed from their parents' care and taken into foster care for the brief period of time before they graduated and became eighteen and legally independent. So frankly, yes, if a student doesn't feel safe, if they're, feel that they are in danger of being abused, then yes, it is absolutely the students' right that certain information, information that is of no bearing to the parent, such as who the student is romantically attracted to, or their gender identity, is kept secret, the same way you would keep, if a student was interested in a book, or say, Harry Potter, that the parents approved of, you might keep that secret if the student feared they were in danger. And furthermore, if a student was felt unsafe at home, the, for, state and federal law obliges this, the school to protect the student, not the parent. And lastly, I've mentioned the number of signatures on a petition opposing Youngkin's model policies. As of today, last I checked a few hours ago, it's at five hundred and fifty-four signatures, including both the mayor and the vice mayor of Newport News. Thank you.
Larry Elliott. And after that will be Rhonda Williams.
Let's go up a little higher. Evening, my name is Larry Elliott. I am now a resident here at Newport News. I was born and raised here in Hampton, Newport News, in this peninsula. I was educated in Newport News before and after the military service. And I just want to stress right now that I'm here to express my gratitude to the Newport News School Board for you standing firm and supporting the families in our community and approving the Youngkin model policies. These policies are crucial for safeguarding parents' rights, and they're actively involved in our children's education, which I believe should have never been challenged in the first place. Parental rights are God-given, not federal or state, but we are here because those who wish to push against this God-given right have pretty much pushed too far, and I thank you for doing the right thing. And we urge the school district to remain steadfast in upholding these parent-friendly policies, and by implementing these measures, you have been vital in restoring the trust again between the school and the families in this community. And it would be a setback to see the progress undone, and as long as you are protecting every child and keeping a strong academic and safe environment, there is still a big remnant of people who have your back, and I thank you for your effort and time that you have put into the future generation of leaders in this, in this community. I thank you.
Rhonda Williams. Rhonda Williams. And then Dr. Raymond Johnson.
Good evening. How are you all? My name is Rhonda Williams, and I am a resident of Newport News, and I'm the mother of two children that attend Newport News Public Schools. I'm here tonight to simply say thank you. Thank you for all your hard work, thank you for what you do, thank you for listening to us parents and listening to the community. Thank you for implementing policies that protect our rights. Thank you for trusting parents, protecting our children, and restoring our trust back in the Newport News public school systems. Thank you for taking the necessary steps to restore the relationship between parent, child, and school. We, the public school and parents, are connected through our children. Parental involvement in a child's education is essential, and schools need to connect and have a responsibility to connect with the families. Communication should be regular, ongoing, and two-way. Communication and trust are key factors to any successful relationship. It requires what I like to call hot communication, honest, open, and transparent. We communicated, and you listened. And by supporting these parent-friendly policies, our trust is being restored. So I just want to say thank you to the school board for standing strong for the families in our community, and for proven policies that protect parents' rights to be involved in their kids' lives at school. Thank you for communicating that you understand the importance of supporting parent-child relationships. It is dangerous to put a wall between, between kids and their parents. Thank you for eliminating policies that encourage teachers to hide information from parents about their kids, especially when it comes to issues relating to gender and sexuality. Thank you for making it clear that parents must be notified and given notice and given an opportunity to object before counseling regarding gender is given to their children. Stay encouraged. Be strong and of good carriage, and keep these parental-friendly policies in place. We will continue to pray for you all. We will pray that God will give you wisdom and guidance to do the job that He has set before you, and that you serve the community in a way that is pleasing to Him. Thank you.
Dr. Raymond Johnson. And then the last in the set will be Jasmine Thomas.
Great afternoon, Madam Chairwoman, Dr. Best, my South Representative, school board member. If I may allow the other clergy to stand with me as I make my comments in regards to the model policies from Governor Youngkin. Gentlemen, if you all would join me real quickly, for those of you who will stand, I'll continue speaking while they are coming. My name is Dr. Raymond Johnson. I'm a local pastor in the city of Newport News. I'm here today with clergy representative of all, all over the peninsula. I currently serve on the Hampton Roads Ecumenical Council of Bishops as the Peninsula Representative, and also as a superintendent in the Second Jurisdiction of the Church of God in Christ of Virginia, which stretches all the way from Virginia Beach to the western part of the state. And so as other members of the clergy were already here, we want to stand and show our support and solidarity to the school board and Dr. Mitchell on these issues in regards to children and the idea of transitioning. We want to thank you for approving policies that continue to involve the rights of parents to be involved in the lives of their children. We want you to please stay encouraged in regards to these policies and continue to support those policies which are family-friendly, that continue to allow children to be engaged with their parents. Thank you so much for listening to the recommendations of Dr. Mitchell, our superintendent, which reflect the concerns of thousands of tax-paying parents, families, and students in the community. Many of these parents and children are members of our congregation and ten public schools here in Newport News. On these issues, I took a few minutes to speak with several noted mental health specialists, one in particular that holds two doctorates, one in psychology, the other in counseling. These noted specialists referred to me three main references. One was the National Institute of Mental Health, the second, the Australian Government Analysis of Children's Psychological Development, and third, the United States National Library of Medicine. All confirmed that brain development in teens and children are not fully formed until they reach full capacity somewhere in their mid-twenty's. I take this research to mean that this is why both children and adolescent teens are in need of guidance and supervision, which comes from parents, as this guidance is in the form of their parents, who have the responsibility of raising their children into well-rounded, healthy, rounded individuals and adults. who have the responsibility of raising their children into well-rounded, healthy, rounded individuals and adults. In our society, I believe our school board understands that young people can't even get a driver's license without their parents' permission. They cannot miss school without parents' consent. Uh, they also are not able to be out of school without parents' consent. And so we want the school board to continue to approve and support these policies. While all of us stand in solidarity with you, we firmly believe that we want Newport News to be, continue to be a great place to live, work, raise a family, and also continue to educate our children. Thank you.
Jasmine Thomas. Jasmine Thomas.
Good evening. My name is Jasmine Thomas and I am a Newport News resident. While I am not a parent, I am considered a godmom to three children who attend Newport News Schools. I am also actively involved in many children's lives who attend various schools in Newport News. Tonight, my message is brief. And I would like to thank the Newport News School Board members for protecting parents' rights to be involved in their children's lives at school. I request that the Newport News School Board members stand firm on the VA Department of Education updated policies approved by the superintendent because they keep parents involved. I would also like to share that the CDC promotes parental engagement and links it to academic achievement, better student behavior, enhanced social skills, and much more. Again, I request that the Newport News School Board members stand firm on the policies approved by our superintendent because it keeps parents involved. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everyone for their comments and thoughts this evening. And as I mentioned, there will be a second set of, um, remarks, uh, at the end of our meeting.
Four point zero one personnel actions. Four point zero two new and revised policies. Revised policies.
Try just.
Four point zero.
There we go. We got it. It picked up my voice. We will now move on to section three, the Consent Agenda, which includes three point zero one minutes from the work session, May twenty-one, twenty-twenty-four. Three point zero two minutes from the special meeting, May twenty-one, twenty-twenty-four. Three point zero three minutes from the regular meeting, May twenty-one, twenty-twenty-four. Also, three point zero four financial reports, including the revenue report for May twenty-twenty-four, the expense report for May twenty-twenty-four, and the child nutrition reports for May twenty-twenty-four. Three point zero five, Personnel Report. Three point zero six, VDOE Authorization of Signature in Absence of Division Superintendent. And three point zero seven, Budget Transfer. At this time, can we have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Amon.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is four point zero two, New and Revised Policies. May I have a motion to approve the new and revised policies?
Madam Chair, I move at this time to approve the policies under the Student Admission Policies. That is JFABD, Admission of Students Experiencing Homelessness. JFC, Students Withdraw from School, Dropouts. And number three, JFCA, Student Reentry to School.
We are taking, since it's a large number of policies, we will be taking them in blocks. So this first block, that is our motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hunter, thank you. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Amon.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Against.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion carries six one. Thank you. Next set.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the policies under Student Attendance Policies. That's JH, Student Attendance. JHBA, Attendance Services Within the Division. JHBB, Attendance Monitoring slash Accounting. JHCB, Excused Absence for Religious Observance. And JHD, Exemption from Compulsory School Attendance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Amon.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. The next set is Student Conduct, Student Activity Related Policies.
Madam Chair, I move to approve Policies JJ, Student Rights and Responsibilities.
That's, uh.
I'm sorry. JI. Students' Rights and Responsibilities. JIA, Student Due Process Rights. JIB, Student Involvement in Decision-Making. JIC, Student Conduct. JICA, Student Dress. JICAB, Uniforms for Students. JICH, Drug and Alcohol Possession, Use, Sell, or Distribution by Students. JIG, Married Students, Pregnant Students, Students with Children. JIH, Student Interviews, Inter- Inter- Where am I? Oh, I'm sorry.
Inter-
Oh, inter- interrogations, I'm sorry. Searches and Arrests. JII, Student Concerns, Complaints and Grievances. And JK, Student Discipline.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Amon.
Against.
Best.
Oh, sorry.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Against.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion carries five two. The next set is Student Services and Counseling Related Policies.
Madam Chair, I move to approve Policy JLD, School Counseling. JLDA, School Psychologists. JLDAB, Referral of Students to Other Agencies. JLDAC, Psychological Evaluations. JLDBC, Substance Abuse Education. JJE, Student Social Services. JLF, Child Abuse slash Child Protection. JHL, Missing Students. JLI, Student Safety. JLIB, Student Seclusion and Restraint. And JIC, Protective Order Notification.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Amon.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Against.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion passes six one. Thank you. The last set are Administrative Related Policies.
Madam Chair, I move to approve Policy CH, Policy Implementation. CHD, Administration in the Absence of Policy. And BG, Adoption of a Policy Manual.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Amon.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero. Thank you so much. I want to also thank our Policy Committee. That was a feat. And I know that you have graciously worked with the board to get those policies as close to consensus as we possibly could. So thank you so much for that. We really do appreciate. So you deserve a hand. The next item on our agenda is four point zero three, Federal Funding Applications. May I have a motion to approve the federal funding applications?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Title I, II, III, and IV Grants in the total amount of fourteen million, seven hundred sixty-six thousand, nine hundred thirty-five dollars and ninety-four cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Any discussion? I can just say I'm thankful for these, this opportunity to apply for these funds. Yes. Please call the roll. Amon.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion passes seven zero. Great. The next item on the agenda is four point zero four, VDOE, Division Literacy Plan. May I have a motion to approve the Division Literacy Plan?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Division Literacy Plan as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Alger. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Best.
Four.
I'm sorry. Back up, Ms. Buffalo. Amon.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is four point zero five. Amend the FY twenty-five Operating Budget. May I have a motion? Actually, I think we should, do we want to do a comment on this one before? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Scarlett Minto is going to come before you tonight to share the amended, recommended amended FY twenty-five operating budget. She's put a lot of energy, a lot of work into this since the last time she was here, and I think you will be pleased.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Co-Chair, Members of the Board, and Dr. Mitchell. It is my pleasure this evening to present the Fiscal Year 2025 Operating Budget Update. This spending plan supports the goals and vision set by the School District, Plan Journey 2025, and the priorities we have identified as we stay the course. As you may recall, the School Board Fiscal Year 2025 Operating Budget approved in March was based primarily on the Governor's Proposed Budget. In May, the Governor approved the General Assembly's 2024 through 2026 Biannual Budget Recommendations. This gives us an opportunity to update our state revenue projection and amend the approved Fiscal Year 2025 Operating Budget. State Direct Aid Funding Formulas are based primarily on student enrollment. The current approved Fiscal Year 25 Operating Budget was based on a student enrollment number of twenty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety students. This was a snapshot in time. However, we now have the final March student enrollment numbers referred to as March ADM, which is the exact number that would be used for the state to calculate future funding. Therefore, the new student enrollment projection of twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and five students has been used. Here to provide this updated state revenue projection for Fiscal Year 25. As noted on this slide, student enrollment is down two point seven percent over Fiscal Year 24 enrollment projection of twenty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty students. For Fiscal Year 2025, the majority of state direct funding changes for NMPS are associated with technical updates. To Direct Aid Programs, for example, the AT-RIS program funding has now been combined with prevention, intervention, and remediation as one program. Funding losses for lower student enrollment will be offset by the increase in this program, about seven additional million dollars. As you may recall, the increase in state revenue projected approved in 2025 operating budget was only one point seven million. The new state revenue projected provides for another thirteen point three million for a total projected increase in state revenue of fifteen million. The city funding increase remains the same at three point five million, with federal revenue and other revenue remaining stable for a total funding sources for Fiscal Year 2025 of eighteen point five million in new funding. Your approved Fiscal Year 2025 Operating Budget was three hundred and eighty-six point six million. With this increased funding, it is projected to be three hundred and ninety-nine point nine million. This is a four point eight percent increase over Fiscal Year 24 funding. So what can we accomplish with the additional thirteen point three million in new funds since your budget was approved in March? We will be able to provide an additional one percent increase for support staff for a total raise of three percent, as well as provide some experience adjustments identified during the approved budget cycle. Teacher raises will increase from two to five percent, and we will continue our work to maintain a one point five percent between steps. We can also increase teacher's starting pay from fifty-three thousand to fifty-five thousand, one hundred. If these salary increase recommendations are approved, they will take effect July first, and salary change notifications will take place by the end of July. With the additional thirteen point three million in funding from the state, I show here how we rebalance the school budget with final total of eighteen point five million in new revenue. Instead of two percent for all staff, the additional funding will provide for a three percent increase for support staff, salary, and benefits, and some experience adjustments for a total of eight point seven million. Five percent increase for teachers, salary and benefits, for a total of fourteen point five million, which includes additional costs for increase in the teacher's starting pay and the maintenance of the teacher's scale. Change in our staffing nets to an additional nine hundred thousand. Increases in health plan costs, two point four million, which is offset by health plan changes of four hundred thousand. Increase in city pension costs of one point five million, offset by a decrease of one point two million for our post- OPEB, post-benefit claims, and Virginia retirement employer cost. Total personnel cost is twenty-eight point five million, an increase offset by three point nine million, a decreases which nets a twenty-four point six million dollar increase in personnel cost. Non-personnel decreases in contract services of seven hundred thousand. Anticipated increase in New Horizons Fuel, Utilities, and Educational Materials is one million, which is offset by seven point one million in anticipated savings associated with turnover and attrition and elimination of one-time, whoops, elimination of one-time expenditures. Total increase of twenty-nine point five million, total decreases of eleven million, that's to our new revenue amount of eighteen point five million. Questions?
I'm gonna ask the question that I asked when we got to hear this news in our time with you. Over the past three to four years, what have been our total amount of increases that we've been able to do?
So since twenty-three, we have provided about twenty-one point six percent. If we approve this, uh, budget recommendation, we will have provided teachers a twenty-one point six percent increase and staff, support staff, a thirteen percent increase.
Okay, and that's over.
Three years.
Three years.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Get some Amon.
Thank you, and good news, I have a question. The reduction in teaching positions, could you share a little bit about that? Because there's always the concern, reduce teaching position.
Okay, yes, this was approved in your budget in March. It's not new. Um, we actually have some program changes that didn't require filling these positions, so it was not a burden on any current programs. Um, these were never, not even being posted to be filled. So this is not anything new. There's no positions in danger, our current teaching staff.
So no teacher lost their position?
That's correct. No, these are positions that haven't been filled for some time, years, actually.
Okay. Mr. Brown?
My question along the same lines is, in terms of rank, where does this salary increase rank amongst the highest raises that we've given? Is this tied, or is this maybe?
Last year, we actually have, are you talking about teachers?
Talking, uh, yeah, teachers.
Uh-huh. So last year, our average teacher raise was between nine point six and ten percent. So that was a really nice jump there. And the previous year was six point six percent, and the previous year was six percent. So we've been really hammering it. Um, in addition to eliminating our teacher compression on our scales to keep everyone step one point five percent apart. Um, and then this year, for next year, we're recommending five percent, even though the Governor's only recommending three percent.
Any other questions or comments?
I can make one other comment, which is, you know, because I've been very critical historically of our City Council and the level of support that we have received, I want to be equally commendable this evening on where I believe that we've truly turned a serious corner. This is not the first year, but it's an additional year in a row where we have seen an increase in funding, increase in support from our City Council. And so I want to make that publicly known, uh, that, uh, it is great to be working with. And so I want to make that publicly known, that it is great to be working with the City Council that sees the importance of education in our city, and sees, I had my own council member contact me and say, hey, they were concerned to make sure that we were giving competitive raises, that we were able to retain our teachers. So it's great to have a partner working with us like that, and I just want to make, I want to highlight that, that that is critically important to our success. So in a, in a year where we were only supposed to do two percent, we're actually doing five percent if we pass this budget tonight, which I think it's a really big deal that we've been able, over these years, to do as many raises as we have done with flat funding. But now we actually have funding increases, and we're able to continue to do these raises, and it's a really big deal, I think, for, for us, and we should take this moment to really just reflect on, we've come very, very much a long way. In terms of compression is no longer a serious problem for us, salary compression in our division, so.
And then also, thanks to the, and they're not here, but the General Assembly being able to, can, since our enrollment was, is down, that would have meant we would have gotten less funding. And so we're at this point today, being able to approve this adjustment to the budget, so. Yes.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman, I mean Chairwoman, I mean. I think it's more important also that we congratulate, or I congratulate my peers here on this school board, because, you know, three or four years ago, we decided, or five years ago, we decided that no matter what happens or who sits in the seat in this city, it is our job to continue to try to communicate effectively. We, we had a lot of emails unanswered, a lot of doors may have been closed, but I just want to thank you all for the continued support and us sticking together and ensuring that we make this happen, so. Commend each, each of you, thank you.
You as well. All right, well, let's not hold this off any longer.
Hold on, you gotta go through the process.
Oh, you have to?
This one. So at this time, I am going to ask the School Board to approve a new total for the School Board Adopted Funds that includes a general fund, three hundred and ninety-nine million dollars, eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-one. Workers' comp, two million, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-six. Textbook funds, six million, thirteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-six. Child nutrition services, twenty-seven million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-two. This is an increase of one point five million for the CNS, from the CNS fund balance to ensure coverage of additional raises and increase in cost and capital associated with cafeteria improvements. For a total School Board Adopted Funds of four hundred and thirty-five million, four hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five.
May I have a motion to approve the amended FY twenty-five operating budget?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the FY amended operating budget in the total amount of four hundred and thirty-five million, four hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Amon?
Four.
Best?
Four.
Brown?
Four.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Searls Law?
Four.
Motion passes seven zero.
Yay.
We will move on to Section Five, Reports and Information. Five point zero one is the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five student fees. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, Dr. Felicia Barnett will come before you to share the student fees for the upcoming school year. Thank you, Dr. Barnett.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman Searls Law, Vice Chairwoman Dr. Best, members of the School Board, and Dr. Mitchell. This evening, I will share a summary of our student fees for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Student instructional fees cover essential costs associated with delivering educational services. These fees often support expenses such as classroom materials and resources, and technology resource support that directly enhance the learning experiences for students within our school division. The student fee process in Newport News Public Schools begins with schools and departments submitting fee requests. These requests are reviewed collaboratively by the Department of School Leadership, Curriculum and Development, and Finance, where options and implications are discussed. Input from content supervisors and principals is sought to ensure a comprehensive consideration. Once finalized, the fee schedule is revised and published on the Newport News Public Schools website and incorporated into the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook for Accessibility to Students and Families. We prioritize working to ensure equitable practices for our students. Students are not denied access to resources if they cannot pay the fees. Payment arrangements can be made to accommodate students in need of financial support to cover these costs. The following fees are set for visual and performing arts such as band, orchestra, and chorus for our middle school students. These fees cover student resources, instrumental rental charges, and band, chorus, or orchestra uniforms. Visual and performing arts fees are also required of students participating in art, theater, band, chorus, and orchestra in our high schools. And like in middle school, these costs support instructional, instrumental resources, or rental charges, as well as uniforms for band, chorus, and orchestra. Fees for students participating in career and technical education in middle and high schools are listed on either a yearly or semester basis. These fees range from five dollars to ten dollars based on the level, and cover materials and supplies for courses such as family and consumer science, technology and engineering education, and health and medical sciences. Additionally, middle school students participating in ISTEM courses are also responsible for a small fee on a semester basis of five dollars, or a yearly cost of ten dollars. In the event a student's Chromebook or technology device or accessories need to be replaced due to damage, specific fees are listed to cover these costs. Lost or stolen devices, or devices that are damaged beyond repair, carry replacement costs of up to a hundred and twenty-five dollars for the first occurrence, and have a gradual increase based on the number of occurrences. On our high school level, Newport News Public Schools students participating in our driver education course pay a fee of two hundred and twenty-five dollars, and students outside of our district who choose to take the Behind the Will course pay a fee of two hundred and fifty dollars. Additionally, students who are, students are not charged to rent materials such as heart rate monitors and lots for lockers for health and PE classes, but there are replacement costs associated if these supplies are lost or damaged. The replacement costs for lost or damaged textbooks, library books, and calculators are based upon the prorated cost of the item over time. Out-of-division and non-Virginia residents have the opportunity to attend schools within our district by paying tuition costs. For the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year, tuition rates are specified alongside comparisons from previous years. Historically, the number of out-of-district students paying tuition has varied between two to nine students annually. Additionally, waivers are available to out-of-district students who are dependents of Newport News Public School employees, subject to review in our approval process. This concludes my presentation on student fees, and I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Amon?
Oh, yes, thank you. I think most of these are fairly intuitive, could you explain a bit about the sports medicine, what that fee would be for?
Well, specifically, that fee would cost any materials or supplies that may be required in that course. So the fee is small, but it might be any additional resources or small supplies required for students who take courses under sports medicine.
Dr. Best?
Okay, I have two. For devices, and let's just say a child does not pay, if it's damaged, or whatever, they are given a device to use while in school, is that correct?
Correct, we do have loaners within our schools that students can access if they are at a point where they've damaged it beyond repair and have had several opportunities to receive devices at that time after several occurrences. We certainly try to work with the family, but we always provide an opportunity for students to use a device within the school through our loaners.
Okay, and then my second question is in reference to the band uniforms. The slide had that it varies by school. Are the band uniforms, do we have some type of rotation where high schools are replaced every five years, seven years? Is that, are we using it? And can you elaborate a little on that, and if you can't, can you get it and then maybe get back?
Absolutely.
Because I've had some discussion with parents and teachers regarding that, so I was just, it was good you brought it up.
Certainly, I know that our band program, we do use uniforms, and after several years, we do look at replenishing those or getting newer uniforms, but I can get the specific information on that exact time period of a cycle and what happens with that back to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Doctor, can I just come right in?
Yes.
That's all right? Good evening, Chairwoman Searls Law.
Hello.
Vice Chair Dr. Best, School Board Members, and Dr. Mitchell. I just had the same conversation with Mrs. Shehan Smith just yesterday about the rotation, and she is absolutely working on a rotation, we have not had one prior to this year, so she's working on that so we can look at equity, equity across the schools, okay?
Thank you.
All right, you're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Because I saw some of the emails going out, some student parent. The backpacks, we're getting sturdier ones, but are we looking at if, if one breaks, it's our parents that be responsible for additional ones if they can't find them, or as sturdy? Would there, are we considering any cost for, for replacement backpacks? Would that be going into this? Where are we on that?
We will, we will purchase the initial backpack, and then we will provide parents with the criteria in the event that they need to replace it. However, Scarlett Minto has worked with a vendor, they have designed a backpack that has a cloth bottom, and the seams are sturdier, so our hope is that it will last, but we will provide parents with.
Because we went through three.
So we will certainly start the year off by, the school division will purchase that, with the help from the city.
Any other questions?
Well, I'll, I'll save my questions too, when we do have a report from Technology. I'm real curious of how many computers get broken and how frequently we're having to replace those, but we can save that for another day.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Board?
We appreciate you, thank you. We'll move on to Section Five. Nope, I'm sorry, where'd that come from? Yep, one more, there we go, five point zero two. The twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. And I think we have several here to support us for this one.
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening, Madam Chair Searls Law, Vice Chair Dr. Best, members of the Board, and Dr. Mitchell. As you know, each year I come before you to present proposed changes and revisions to the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. Our, as a reminder, is this me clicking? As a reminder, our Rights and Responsibilities Handbook is a tool that helps us in our mission to ensure all students graduate citizen-ready. It provides guidance to our students, our families, and our staff, and details the many options we have available to us as we address student conduct. There are several revisions to the process, excuse me, there are several phases to our revision process. After reviewing guidelines and recommendations, we have a longstanding practice of gathering stakeholder input from multiple groups. Finally, our proposals are reviewed by senior staff. As you know, each year, we form a committee to review the handbook. This committee is comprised of students, parents, teachers, staff members, and community members with the expertise and vested interest in student success, who extend their thinking to this important work. Based on a review of the data over the past two years, which showed an increase in the number of incidents in shoving, pushing, hitting, and biting another student with no visible injuries, the Advisory Committee is recommending a change from a Level Two Administrative Response to a Level Three Administrative Response. Currently, a Level Two response ranges from a student conference, and depending on the severity, can go up to an in-school suspension of one to two days. The Advisory Committee's recommendation is to move to a Level Three response, which ranges from an administrative conference and could possibly lead to a short-term out-of-school suspension of one to three days. Additionally, a Level Three response will provide administrators with more behavior interventions, options, and instructional support options compared to that of Level Two. As part of our next steps, the student dress code and cell phone policies were reviewed. This review was in collaboration with our Sage students. The student dress code garnered a great deal of discussion, but in the end, the committee put forward minor changes such as an update to old language. After a review of data and a lengthy discussion, the committee determined that no recommended changes to the cell phone policy would be brought forward at this time. Due process procedures were reviewed, an update to language was done to better align with departmental names and roles. Additionally, revised wording in student, in suspension and expulsion of students with disabilities was added to better align with special education regulations. The Members of the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook Advisory Committee is a group of parents, teachers, administrators, community members, and students who have become experts in the rights and responsibilities of NMPS students. Using a data-driven decision model, the committee reviewed each behavior code, its usage assessed, and NMPS practices were aligned to state code. I would like to give special recognition to the Members of the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook Advisory Committee. The commitment and long hours well into the evenings spent shifting the paradigm around behavior and student discipline will greatly benefit generations of NMPS students to come. Having a group of parents, teachers, administrators, community members, and students who are willing to become experts in the rights and responsibilities of NMPS students, listen to each other, and make data-driven decision merits praise. I would like for any of our Members of the committee who are here this evening to please stand. Thank you all so much for your work. As a reminder, we will seek your approval of the proposed revisions to the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook at the July School Board Meeting. Draft copies of the twenty-four, twenty-five Rights and Responsibilities Handbook have been provided to you electronically for your review prior to your approval. At this time, I will answer any questions that you may have, and be nice.
School Board Members, you, you have been asked to be nice. Dr. Best, you can go first.
Can you go back to the slide with DSC seventeen?
Oh, that's the level two to three.
The level two to three?
Thank you.
Okay, I'm shoving, pushing, striking, biting.
It's full of stuff.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you just talk a little bit more about it, because this is the one, I know I'm gonna get some phone calls about this one.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
As far as, of course, shoving, pushing, striking, it's not a good behavior, but developmentally, we know some ages do those things more than others, so. So is that going to be considered and how you all may have discussed and how you kinda came to why level three would be better, just a little bit more?
Yes ma'am, absolutely, so level three was, i- it was discussed, first we looked at the data and we saw that there was an increase um, from between twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four year to date. And so from that, we looked at what the responses to the behavior were in level two. And what the team realized um, was that there were more options to respond to the behavior. Um, as far as the discipline sanction as well as um, um, behavioral interventions, there were just more options uh, in that category as well. And level three happens to also include the um, the suspension of one to three days for students in elementary.
Okay, so Dr. Ransom, it's the expectation however, that staff utilize those behavior interventions and not necessarily go right to suspension.
Correct, yes, so um, and that's what we absolutely coach around, thank you for that, um, Dr. Mitchell.
So that, I, so it's basically progressive discipline is what I'm hearing, right?
That is exactly right.
And so um, I'm also wondering in terms of how would this impact, and I imagine this was a discussion uh, in terms of attendance, so if you have students who are at risk of retention due to the number of days that they are out, does this impl- impact? Are students that, you know, perhaps need more intervention, but uh, may uh, be at risk of being suspended more because of behaviors?
So it may impact, but one thing that we are doing currently is we're meeting around students who have some more challenging behaviors in elementary and we do that on a regular basis, so we work collaboratively with school leadership as well as um, with our experts in um, uh, what's our new department, uh, I want to say student advancement, but uh, I know, I can't think of it. Um, but we work collaboratively with our um, ba- uh, psychologists as well as our behavior specialists um, on those teams to prob- to basically troubleshoot what the issues are and come up with some best next steps. And the, the removal from and, from school is always a last resort. Um, we also have our base program um, that wants students, uh, administrators go through that process as we staff the issues and we are able to refer students to that program, uh, that's pre-K through third grade for our fourth and fifth graders. Uh, we have, we do have our um, up and running um, student support program that where students who are suspended um, but from school, short-term are able to participate in that program as well, so we do have options to keep the students in school and when they're doing that, we're also able to um, not impact chronic absenteeism.
And, and of course, uh, please understand that it's important to keep the classroom environment safe, but at the same time with support. Uh, and that's, you know, something that I feel it's important.
Yes.
Um, let's see.
Could you uh, could you run a scenario? Little Marvin comes up. I push little Douglas, right?
Okay.
Douglas tells his parents, the teachers, I, what's the process to uh, level three mean?
So.
And does that process from beginning through the process and closure deal with the parent?
So go back what's before, yes, so the parent is involved in that process because they are gonna receive a phone call of what the situation is, sometimes the parents receive multiple phone calls throughout the investigative process that the administrator will take, they will give the students their due process by having the students to give their side of the story. Um, and then from that, any myriad of things could actually take place where the discipline sanction is, is given where it could be the sanction is a behavior intervention, which we've already included the parent, which is part of our behavior interventions as well as meeting with the counselor, um, it could be a lunch detention. So it goes, it's uh, just a variety of things because no two pushings or shovings are the same. So it always takes that um, a lot of extra steps uh, from the, on administrator's part and collaboration with the other team members to kinda get to the bottom um, of the, the matter to have the best possible outcome for the student.
My question, uh, along similar lines, but this may, uh, it may go into another presentation, let me know about our short-term suspension site. So you mentioned um, I guess base program and I think we had another name for it last year, but my question is generally around what grade levels are we able to support for out-of-school, short-term suspension um, at the alternative school site?
So for the base program, it serves students um, in fourth grade through twelfth grade.
Okay, so first through third don't have a site at this time?
Correct, so right now students between in kindergarten through third grade, we go through our staffing process to, to work on interventions um, and possibly other um, steps such as um, evaluation um, for special education or five oh four or whatever um, comes out of that. So there is a process for kindergarten through third grade, yes.
Now is that, is that space or is that staff, uh, what's the limitation there for kindergarten through third grade in term, in terms of that alternative site that we're, that we're not able to place them immediately next, next year in, in September?
Um, can you clarify, I need, can you?
Is that, is that a, is it a space issue, not enough space at our alternative site, our short-term suspension site for K through three? Or is it a staffing?
So for K through three, there is not a, a short-term suspension option um, for kindergarten through third grade students currently.
And that's state regulatory, right, or no?
Um, so generally, students in kindergarten through third grade are not suspended more than three days out of school unless they have aggravating circumstance where intervention didn't work or um, someone was injured or something in that, in that case.
So our anticipation is that it's so infrequent that we don't have a need for that site for K through third grade, is that? Is that, is that the?
That.
Is that the analysis?
That.
That we don't have a need for an alternative short-term suspension site for kindergarten through third grade because the rate of incident and the length of suspension is so short and rare?
And um, Dr. Ransom, I know that you know what the state code says in terms of the number of days that a s- uh, younger child can be suspended. So part of it is, is predicated on that, but the other part is developmentally, we are really trying to keep them in school um, to really teach them how to interact with each other, so you won't typically find a lot of students that are suspended that are in that age group.
Or alternative schools.
Yeah, alternative schools.
In a public school for them.
Okay, so then, when we're talking about elementary school here, this level three, and this is what, this is what I'm clarifying, level three does not apply for kindergarten through third grade, it only applies for fourth grade and up, fourth and fifth grade.
So currently, level three would apply, and, and the way this um, proposal is, is that it would apply all elementary school students, kindergarten through fifth grade.
And that, and that's just where, and thi- this may take some, take some additional time, so I, I won't, you know, eat up more time just in terms of trying to wrap my mind around, if it applies for kindergarten all through, all the way through fifth grade, then why don't we have the site and the space available?
Different interventions for different ages.
And I, and I understand about the interventions that we do, but still, if level, if it's level three, then level three is supposed to be applied and if level three is not applied, then it's not level three.
But there's levels in level three?
I think, uh, in terms of how I read into it, is that the number of days that are issued in terms of a suspension are, are the same, uh, in terms of moving and location, that's different. So the wraparound services I'm assuming is happening in the building versus outside of the building, which is less intrusive for younger children. That's how, that's how I'm looking at it.
And there's such a, there's a range of, with three, there's a range of other things that build on for those younger students. We don't go straight to.
To suspension, because suspension is the highest response or.
And there's different responses, of course, for different ages, so you wouldn't do the same thing for a kindergartner and a fourth grader or kindi- even though it might be the same offense.
Uh, and we, you said be nice, so I will read, I'm gonna read the electronic report and I'm gonna be reading level three, the definition very closely.
I did have one question. Um, regarding um, students who repeat the offense, I'm not calling them the, you know, repeat offender, but students who repeat the same behavior, um, was there data that you noticed um, with level two being the response? And did we have students who were continually coming back and needing the level two intervention again or? Did you see that?
So there was, re- there were repeat offenders in that category and that, and BSC seventeen encompasses so much of the behavior that we see in the lower grades, um, so we did tend to see that and our administrators do a really good job of, and our counselors and you know, all the other support teams are really working with them around uh, addressing the skills needed to not um, act out those particular behaviors.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Other questions?
Yes, Ms. Amin.
Thank you, um, and I do, you know, the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook is not short, so that was a to- that's a tall order every year to go through, so thank you guys for all of your work. Um, just kind of to build on this and maybe it is worth another conversation, but you know, I have received feedback, you know, sometimes there are situations where behaviors are repeated, so it, it's a detriment to the entire class, so we have to look for other options and sometimes the timeout, for lack of a better, this might be impactful. My concern with there not being an alternate location and maybe the location is within the same school as the student's going to. If you're out for three days and you're already having challenging behaviors, then you come back at a disadvantage of the three days that was taught. You might need to be in a different environment from, if you need that sort of short-term suspension. But what are, are they at home, so they're not, you almost, you build, um, you compound the problem sometimes if they're coming back with, with nothing after, so I guess my question would be, you know, do we have, do we have a means if we do need short-term time away from the environment, but if it's possible to ensure that they're not losing too much learning in that timeframe? So they come back not too far behind.
You want it?
Nah, I'll let you have it, you're the boss, now what do you mean?
Back and forth.
We do have what is called administrative homebound, so if a student is, a second grader is out for three days and the teacher indicates that they, they really need to keep up, then we can do administrative homebound where a teacher will either go to the home or now that we have such good technology, they will zoom with the student, so some parents will accept it and others may not.
And we do offer that option quite a bit.
Okay, uh, board members, are we done being nice? I'm gonna teach you for a while.
I know, I know.
Oh, we really do appreciate you answering our question.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you very, very much.
All right, thank you.
We're gonna now move on to section five, reports and information, uh, five point zero three revised policies, Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, again, Ms. Tracy Brooks will come before you to uh, share some revised policies.
Great, thank you, good evening, Madam Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, members of the board and Dr. Mitchell. In closing out the school year, the Policy Committee reviewed eighteen policies and procedures, so it is a pleasure to share highlights from just five of the revised policies and procedures with you this evening. The Policy Committee, which facilitated the review process during the school year, included to school board members, principals, teachers, administrators and our school board and school division attorneys. Tonight, I will share a few of the remaining policies from the General School Administration Chapter and the Students' Chapter, both of which are in the fourth year of our policy review timeline. The Policy Committee also got a jumpstart into next school year with a revision of a policy in the School, Community and Home Relations Chapter on the use of Todd Stadium that I will speak to later in this presentation. The first policy this evening addresses the assignment and transfer of building administrators in our school division and was revised to state that the school board holds the superintendent responsible for the effective placement and transfer of these administrators. In taking such actions, the superintendent may consider the needs of the school division, the compatibility of the leader's administrative style with the other administrators in the building, the opportunity for professional growth in the proposed assignment, any specialized training that the leader possesses and the administrator's professional endorsements and previous leadership experience. Next, I would like to share our revisions to the Temporary Administrative Assignments Policy in which the school board acknowledges that the superintendent may deem it necessary to reassign staff on a temporary basis to fill building level and other administrative positions. We clarified the language that requires the superintendent to notify the school board at its next regularly scheduled meeting of any temporary administrative assignments that were put in place during the preceding weeks. This next policy endorses the school division's administrative intern program to encourage qualified employees to further prepare them for leadership positions. The program includes administrative internships that provide practical on-the-job experiences for staff as an essential component of the leadership program. We also edit language that Human Resources must approve all administrative internships and will work with the Department of School Leadership to determine the most appropriate placement locations for participating staff. Our policy on sudden cardiac arrest prevention awareness was mandated by state law a few years ago and required school divisions to inform coaches and parents about the identification and handling of symptoms that may lead to sudden cardiac arrests in student athletes. Since that time, the state developed guidelines to provide information and direction to educate coaches, athletes and their parents on the warning signs and risk factors associated with sudden cardiac arrest. We are proposing to attach those guidelines as procedures to our policy which reinforce the requirement for parents to review the information annually and then to acknowledge receipt. Our next last policy this evening is on the community use of Todd Stadium. Now while community members and organizations have often rented Todd Stadium and its grounds over the years, we revised the policy to state that the facilities and ground should be used primarily for youth-serving activities, especially as the demand increases given the recent installation of the beautiful turf. We also took the opportunity to grant permission to colleges and universities to rent our facility for activities that benefit students in our school division, such as prospect camps for various sports. So in terms of our next steps, the reviewed and revised policies will come before the school board for action at your July first meeting. And once approved, the updated policies and procedures will be posted on our school division websites and disseminated to schools and public libraries. So this concludes my report this evening. I would like to say a special thank you to the Department of School Leadership and the Department of Teaching and Learning Team Members for their leadership in working with the Policy Committee to complete the numerous policies and procedures that have come before you this school year. And of course, a special thank you to our dedicated Policy Committee members. Good evening.
Thank you.
Or thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, I'm sure they will come.
Thank you.
We will move to five point zero four, the attendance report, five point zero five, the membership report, five point zero six, the construction report. Board members, you've received a copy of this report, are there any questions at this time? So hearing none, we'll move on to item five point zero seven, comments by the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, we wrapped up another successful school year and I want to take just a few moments to thank our instructional staff and support staff for their commitment and dedication to our students and families. Newport News Public Schools is home to devoted professionals who take great care of our students, staff and facilities. Our staff doesn't just report to work every day, they make a difference. Staff, your actions truly have made a positive impact on students and families that we serve. The result of our efforts were this on display earlier this month when over one thousand five hundred students walked across. when over one thousand five hundred students walked across the stage and received their well-deserved diploma in front of thousands of guests. It was a proud time for all of us. I would like to take a moment to share some interesting facts about the class of twenty twenty-four. The graduate, this year's graduates earned over forty-five million dollars in scholarship offers and academic awards, and the, the numbers are still coming in, so we are still counting. The class of twenty twenty-four received over one thousand seven hundred uh, acceptance offers to various colleges, universities, and military institutions. I am proud that our Newport News Public Schools has laid groundwork for these graduates. Now these young people are prepared for future success. So again, congratulations to the class of twenty twenty-four and to their families. Additionally, last week, our Youth Development Department hosted the Elementary Star Awards. Two hundred and forty elementary students, representing every elementary school, were honored for their leadership and volunteerism. Congratulations again to the honorees for their initiative service and activism. The Newport News Education Foundation's annual Salute to Success banquet was held three weeks ago. It was a great display of college, career, and citizen readiness. The event recognized one hundred and forty high school, high-achieving students, including our valedictorians, our salutatorians, students who earned four or more industry or career certifications, and the Newport News Education Foundation and Virginia Educators Credit Union Scholars. So congratulations to all of those honorees. Last Thursday, the Newport News Education Foundation and the school division hosted its third annual golf classic at Kiln Creek Golf Club to benefit the education foundation's programs. Numerous foursomes registered and enjoyed the eighteen-hole championship course. We thank the golfers, we thank our sponsors, and the foundation planning team for another successful tournament. Congratulations to Menchville High graduate Matthew Onoff, who won the Virginia High School League Class Five Boys Tennis Single State Championship two uh weeks ago. So as you see, we continue to have state championships. Matthew earned the first state tennis crown for a peninsula player since nineteen ninety-two. So kudos to Matthew, very well done. Newport News Public Schools is proud to offer virtual summer learning activities to keep preschool through fifth grade students engaged in learning throughout the summer. The elementary summer learning portal helps our younger students sharpen their, sharpen their skills. The portal includes eight weeks of reading, writing, math, and social emotional activities for preschool students. Parents have the flexibility to choose when, where, and how much their children engage in learning. Participation is optional, and it is also self-paced. I also encourage families of all grade levels to visit the summer learning portal for suggested reading lists, the reading choice boards, and required reading for middle and high school students. Please visit our website for more information. And that concludes my remarks for this evening, and have a great summer. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I'll just take this moment on behalf of the board to thank you for all of your hard work this school year.
Thank you.
You really do appreciate it. And we know you do not do it alone, so for your leadership team,
That is absolutely correct.
we appreciate you all as well. We'll move on to item six, another opportunity to hear from the public. I'm not gonna ask, are there any cards? Because I think I have every card in the building up here. And we will move on, uh, and so I will move on in the manner in which we did before. I'll call several names and just come in the order that I call. So the first one is Ron Lee. The one after that will be Russell Ev- Evenson, and then Jason Slicker. So Ron Lee.
Hi.
Hi.
Good afternoon, board. Or evening, should I say?
Hello.
On two prior occasions, I urged the board to do what is morally right. I asked you all to overturn JBP before the federal government steps in and mandates this change. I encourage you all to be the heroes instead of being remembered as a type of district that discriminated against the marginalized community until your hand was forced by the feds. The new Title IX was updated and will take effect on one August. The new definition of sex-based harassment includes protection against discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity. On one August, all students, regardless of gender identity, will be able to join any club or activity they wish, except sports, for now. On one August, refusal to use pronouns as they request will be discriminatory. On one August, outing a child to their parents will subject a person to more than de minimis harm, and that will be discriminatory. On one August, JBP will qualify as hostile environment harassment. On one August, if the offender commits discrimination, Title IX protections will extend beyond the school, regardless of a location, even if outside the United States or in a church. Any student, parent, employee, or person participating in an education program or activity may make a complaint about sex-based harassment or discrimination. Buckle up, it's gonna be a wild riot if JBP is still in the books on one August. After thirty-one July, the WOW Church will be another hate group with Doug Brown as a member. And any discriminatory policies will be linked to that, and that will be enforceable because outside of the school district, based on Title IX. You have one more chance before one August, in July, of course, to be the heroes that demand equality and support human rights before the federal government holds your hand and makes you do what you have been incapable of doing based on sound moral character. I will conclude a song, uh, song by Sasha Allen, "A Man." One day, when they find my bones in the ground, whoever they are will say, "Look what we found. A historical find, a relic in time, and they'll never attest that I don't know my mind." One day, when they find my bones in the earth, they will not equate who I was to what I'm worth. And they find your bones from the same frame of time, and they'll treat your bones just as they've treated mine. We're the same. One day, when they come across my remains, they won't consider assumptions you've made. They will see me, not the things you say. They will put up my bones in a...
Thank Dr. Mitchell and the school board for taking a stand with what we believe is to protect our children, kids, youth, parents, and their rights in these, in these things, in these matters that we're discussing. I'm sorry, Mr. Lee has labeled WOW Church a hate group. That's very far from the truth. We have folks that come from all walks of life, all cultures. We're a very receptive, very open congregation. I'm sorry that he's turning this into what seems like a personal uh issue between us and, and Doug Brown. And uh, so I apologize that he feels like that's what it is, but that's not who we are. Uh, we're a church, we're a congregation, we love people. You can go on our website, you can see uh the views, that it's a very multicultural church. Uh, young people, children, we're a family-oriented church. But I didn't come here to discuss that tonight, but since you made that comment, I'd just like to say something in reference to all of our congregation, which a number of them are here tonight. But it's not just us, it's not just one church. You heard from Reverend Ray Johnson, who is a, a leader of a coalition of eight hundred to nine hundred uh people within the congregations. Our church is a church of eight hundred to nine hundred people that love people. I just simply came here tonight to thank the school board for taking a stand and uh for adopting the policy model and hope that you'll have the courage in the face of all of this to continue to stand strong. Thank you, thank you.
Jason, Jason Slicker? You're Jason, correct, okay. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, honored school board members. My name is Jason Slickter. I'm a retired veteran and a resident of Hampton for fifteen years. Uh, I'm a husband and a father of two school-aged children. Um, and I've been a pastor at James River Community Church for almost five years. Uh, I wanted to thank you for your public service, first of all, and also for standing up for what is right, even in the face of pressure to compromise and give in to the demands of those who promote the acceptance of destructive ideologies among children within our community. Uh, the word of the one true and living God is very clear. Genesis one twenty-seven says, "God created man in his own image, in the image of God he created him, male and female he created them." Romans one calls homosexuality a dishonorable passion, and Leviticus eighteen calls it an abomination. The facts of biology are also very clear. There are only two genders, and they are assigned at the moment of conception by the Creator and cannot be changed. Human beings with Y chromosomes are males, those without them are females. And it's obviously against nature to live in the practice of sodomy as it's biologically impossible for that kind of union to result in reproduction. Ecclesiastes twelve says, "Fear God and keep his commandments, for this is the whole duty of man." For God will bring every deed into judgment, including every secret thing, whether good or evil. You will be judged by your eternal almighty Creator, not on how your policies align with public sentiment, but with how your policies align with God's Word and His revealed will. You must discourage any policy that promotes the practice of gender dysphoria and promote policies which discourage it. Public school teachers who promote these things should not only be forced to tell parents what they're doing, and I'm glad that you are forcing them to do that, but they should be disciplined or fired because they are in rebellion against God and His created order. They are lying to children and teaching them what is harmful and false. If a teacher was found teaching their classroom of students that black people are an inferior race or that pedophilia is a good and virtuous practice, that teacher would most likely be fired. And so the problem is that we are doing what's culturally acceptable, not what God says is acceptable by His word and His law. So I implore you, in the name of our Savior and Lord Jesus Christ, govern not in the fear of man, but in the fear of Almighty God. Thank you for listening.
Veronica Williams? Veronica Williams? Donnie Elmore? Donnie Elmore? Nick Hall? Yes, you are Connie Elmore. Oh, Connie, that's okay, that's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I first just wanna say thank you all. You alone know what it costs you to serve in this position. You could be home, relaxing, enjoying family, and lots of other things. So I just wanna personally thank you for your service. Um, I'm the grandmother of a Newport News student at Yates Elementary. Um, and I'm here um just to share my heart about um the policies. God has given mankind the power to create life. It's an honor and a privilege when a, a man and a woman come together, sperm and egg unite. A life is created, a child is created, and that's an honor and a privilege. And with that creation of a child, we have the honor and responsibility to love them, protect them, instruct them, and guide them into their God-given destinies. So I wanna thank you, superintendent and school board members, for approving policies that keep parents in their rightful place of knowing and being fully, you know, fully knowing what's going on with their children and aware of all the things related to them. So I just wanna ask you to uphold those policies. Don't allow any policies that would hide information from parents. Um, and just listening to the, the comments from different um views on this, I think that if we put ourselves in each other's shoes and think about, well, what if it was the opposite thing that we were talking about? What if we were talking about something that the transgender um group doesn't agree with? They would want to know if their child was being um exposed or experiencing things like that. So I just thank you and ask you to um continue to uphold parents' rights. Thanks.
Nick Hall?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Nick Hall. I'm a Newport News resident, I'm a father and a grandfather. Um, and I wanna thank you for your support of parental rights. The, you know, my concern is the welfare of our children, and not just mine, but everybody's. And parents need help with helping their children deal with issues that children deal with. Um, everybody goes through that, one way or another. And parents need to help their children do that. And so you guys are supporting that, and I appreciate that, and I wanna encourage you to stay the course. I know it's not easy. We're not, part of the difficulty is the fact that we're not, we're not debating ideologies. Well, we're debating implementation of that, and, and how do you define that? It's, you know, there's a lot of issues that are involved. And parents need to be at the forefront, helping their children go through what they have to go through. They have to grow up, they have to mature, and it's just the process of life. So, thank you very much.
Excuse me, but we're having trouble reading the next name. It looks like it says, "Then Ross." I don't know if it's Ross or Rose.
Thea Ross.
Thea.
Sorry, my handwriting is terrible. Appreciate y'all giving me some time this evening. I have some prepared remarks. But first, my name is Thea Ross, my pronouns are she/her. Um, and let's see here. My phone's just about to die, y'all, I apologize. Am I time running? Here we go. Good evening, everyone, my name is Thea Ross, my pronouns are she/her, and I stand here today as an out and proud trans woman living in Hampton Roads. Thank you for gathering here today to rally against the ill-advised policies being forced on our communities. All of y'all wonderful people, for being present and shining a light on an urgent and critical issue. We stand at a crossroads right now where the actions that we take are going to affect our students for the rest of their lives. When it comes down to it, screw the speech. When it comes down to it, we got what, one point seven million peoples in, in Hampton Roads? About the right? If you have got the economic estimations, that means we've got what, here, thirty-five, six thousand trans kids, trans people that live in Newport News? We're your neighbors, we're one to three percent of the population. When you make policies, specifically, Dr. Mitchell, when you put policies forward that supposedly are supposed to enable mental health services and enable us to have those conversations, but children aren't feeling safe to actually come out, how are they going to actually take advantage of those mental health services? How are they going to stand up and be present and get the, the help that you want to provide them if that means, and it comes at the cost of outing themselves? Because outing yourself to a parent that's not supportive, it can lead to death. The truth of the matter is that other school boards have already implemented policies like this. These folks wanna say that they protect every child, they got buttons right on their shirt? There are already children in Hampton Roads who have committed suicide because of these policies. Our side, we don't, we're not even allowed to talk about it. It's too painful for those parents. But the most shameful thing of all these people here standing here today is they believe it's your job, the state's job, the school board's job to be their parents. If any child does not feel safe coming out to their parents or talking to them, that is an issue of conscience, one you cannot resolve as administrators. When you wade into that issue, when you decide we're gonna paint a policy that will out these kids, you will lead to harm. Harm that will manifest in legal consequences for this board, financial consequences. Why would you even bring that upon yourselves? You have a choice right now to do nothing, and you do no harm. You incur the wrath of what, a state, a state board that's not even gonna come after you? But here's what is going to happen. A kid will get hurt, that parent will sue the school district, and all of you will be, have blood on your hands because you had the opportunity to say, "Let's just wait, let's not do something today." Let's not do something today." I know a lot of folks want to thank you. They come from a place of religion and God. I, I don't know, I don't have a great relationship with God, but I can tell you this much. I think God and Jesus, if they were here today, would love me just as equally. They would tell me that I have a space in this community. They would say to every trans child, "That you're loved and you're accepted." And if you force them to be out to their parents, if you force the school teachers and administrators to be gender police, you know what's going to happen. You can't walk out of this room. You can't make those decisions and not understand. We've told you point-blank. You've seen the deaths. Do the right thing, please.
Reverend Michael Burnett.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Members of the Board, and Dr. Mitchell, my name is Reverend Michael Dean Burnett. My pronouns are he/him, and I serve multiple congregations in Newport News, which include many families with LGBTQ students in your school system. I didn't bring a $50,000 check with me, sorry to say. And I certainly didn't stand in the pulpit of my church and instruct my congregation to come here and give them a script to use because that would be a major IRS violation. But I did come before you today with a question. And my question is, whom or what are you here to serve? I've been looking over the literature prepared by the school board that's offered on the website and elsewhere. Their patterns emerge. So do you primarily serve the political and business entity known as the Corporation of Newport News? If so, then certainly you must understand what so many of your citizens, as well as groups like the ACLU, have been trying to make clear for over half a year that these model policies do not conform to federal anti-discrimination laws, and especially with the changes to Title IX awaiting implementation leave the city vulnerable to legal action which could lead to a loss of both credibility and money. Do you consider your service to be for the educators and staff under your employ? If so, you'd do well to listen to what your own educators' union has been telling you all along, especially before they achieve the ability to collectively bargain. Do you serve primarily the parents? I'll be honest, I don't see that a whole lot in your literature, except for oblique references to families as they relate to students. So, do you, as is so often said, hold yourself primarily accountable to the students in your schools? If so, this is a no-brainer. The people have spoken, and the data shows that policies, procedures like these have the potential to cause real, actual harms to lives, lives of your real, actual students. I hope you understand that as long as procedures like JBP remain on the books here at Newport News Public Schools, you are leveraging the well-being, if not the whole lives, of some of the most vulnerable children in your care in exchange for political capital. And if that is the case, may God have mercy on your souls. No matter what or whom you feel like you're here to serve, whether it's Newport News, the educators, or the students, and if you do think you're primarily here to serve parents, then you might want to consider revising your literature. It's very clear, this procedure isn't helping. So I implore you yet again, rescind the revision of Procedure JBP, which was implemented in November of '23, and for the sake of your students, for the sake of your educators, and for the sake of the city, and for the sake of justice, do what's right. Thank you.
Tyler Eldred. Tyler Eldred.
Hello again, my name is Tyler Eldred. I am Newport News School System alumni, an organizer for Tidewater DSA, and a proud husband to a non-binary spouse. You know, I have to admit that the difference between a policy and a procedure in context of the Newport News school system is something I am still learning to appreciate, shall we say. But in my time before various city councils and school boards, I'm beginning to pick up some of the lingo. Like if someone were to say, "We wouldn't have enough votes," that means they would prefer not to take a public stance. Or if someone were to say, "Now is not the time," what they mean is, "I am just hoping this will blow over, so I don't have to address it." And if someone says to you, "I can't," almost always, it means, "I'm sorry, but no." It means, "Please make this someone else's responsibility." It means, "You still, you should still have our back, even though we don't have yours." Because we know the difference between a willingness to support and a willingness to seem supportive. Because we know when there is will, there is creativity and resilience and courage. Well, you can see why it might be hard for us to understand. Because contrary to what the cynics may try to say about us, we are not confused about anything, but understand matters of justice with great clarity. Because when we say, "Hate affects the whole community," we mean, "Hate affects the whole community." And when we say, "Protect trans youth," what we mean is, "Protect trans youth." And when we say, "We will remember who stood with us in this pivotal moment of history," we mean, "We will remember who stood with us in this pivotal moment of history." And if we hear any of you say you are allies of the queer community or of the youth or of the marginalized, we know that, what that means to us. And our question for you tonight is, do you?
Candy Cashman or Cushman?
Good evening, it's Candy Cushman. My name is Candy Cushman. As a vice president of the Family Foundation of Virginia, I represent thousands of parents right here on Newport News and also in the Peninsula area. And before I get started with my comments tonight, I just want to bring up the mention that was made of Title IX, which by the way, was originally created to protect equal opportunity for girls' sports. But what hasn't been mentioned tonight is that several states, including Virginia, have successfully challenged the Biden administration's controversial and hotly debated interpretation of that regulation. They have challenged it, and they have won with an injunction. I'm looking at a headline from the Associated Press that came out yesterday, reporting, quote, "Biden's Title IX Rule Blocked By Judge For Six More States, Including Virginia." That is a federal court decision. So actually, it would be irresponsible and possibly against Virginia law, illegal under current Virginia law, for the school board to follow that Title IX interpretation, which is still being fleshed out in the court system. So I just wanted to clarify that for you. Now, I just want to thank you, as you have heard so much tonight. Thank you so much, Newport News School Board members, Superintendent Dr. Mitchell. Thank you for listening to the heartfelt concerns of families in this community and acting to protect parental rights to be involved with their kids' lives at school. We all agree, every single child should be protected from harm without exception. Virginia already has comprehensive bullying, anti-bullying laws at the local and state levels, as well as mandatory reporting laws requiring educators to report suspected abuse. We all need to follow those laws and implement them. But when schools allow policies that create a wedge between the kids and their parents, that creates more danger and harm for kids, not less. It's not a hypothetical concern. We've all seen the headlines around the state of these documented cases, whether it's a child being sex-trafficked after a school hid information from the parents, or it's the kids experiencing sexual assault in bathrooms and not notifying parents. These are real problems; they're not hypothetical. That's why I'm glad you've done the opposite of keeping parents out of the picture. You have earned parents' trust back with this move to respect parental rights. You've, by doing this, you have shown true compassion and have respected parents. Please keep that in place and do not reverse this building of trust in the community. Thank you so much.
W A R, and that's about as much as I can. I'm sorry.
My handwriting's not that great either. Good evening, Members of the Board. My name is Patrick Wornament. As a member of the Navy, I swore an oath to defend the Constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic. JPP comes out of Christian nationalism and the fascism that spawned it. We defeated that fascism 80 years ago, and now it's back wrapped in the US flag and waving a cross. We will defeat it again. I'd like to remind so many of the Christians here of one of the scriptures that so many of them forget. Matthew 25:40. "And the King shall answer and say unto them, Verily I say unto you, Inasmuch as ye have done unto the least of these brethren, ye have done it unto me." I grew up Catholic, I understand. I turned away because of the people like this that claim to follow Christ, that have scripture in their mouths and hatred in their heart. How dare you be cruel to those weaker than you? There are people in this room that remember when they were the ones that were being mistreated, when a school board this diverse was unthinkable. Let the students be who they are. Many speakers here have mentioned parental rights. I reply to them. If the parents don't already know, then there's a reason the child doesn't trust them. I suggest you look within and meditate on why your own behavior prevents your child from trusting you. It's not the school that's driving a wedge; it's the parent's own behavior. Down with the JPP. Thank you.
Um, let's see. Bill Haynes.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. Hey, man, I just wanted to throw this away and say, I support wholeheartedly the decision you've made with the model policy Glenn Youngkin has established. I've read it. I've scanned through it and read it, and I think it's a very well-balanced policy which does not discriminate against anyone and helps everyone to benefit. And also, just want to say this to you. You don't serve man, you serve God. You're here to serve God and uphold what He wants you to do. And down in your conscience, you know what's right because it says in Romans 1, "Everybody knows what's right and what's wrong." So when you uphold the truth of God's Word, I think you're doing the best thing. And I support you for what you're doing so far. I thank you so much. Dr. Mitchell, I know you are the bigger player in that than anybody else, but I thank you for choosing what you did. And I also pray that you just keep standing strong and not bowing down to what you feel sometimes from people that don't agree with what you're doing because it's always going to be that way till the end of time. There's always going to be pressure. So thank you for standing strong, and I pray you keep on doing it. Thank you very much.
Ash Chatingjong.
I promise. Good evening, school board members, Dr. Mitchell. I wish I could say it was a pleasure to be back here, but it isn't. Let's be real, it's not fun to be here. I'm going to do something a little different again tonight. I've noticed that the other side of this issue is wearing "Protect Every Kids" stickers, but I wanted to ask, protect kids from what? The freedom to be a kid? The freedom to explore themselves and their identities safely? How about from parents that speak about them like property? I can't be the only one that's noticed this. I can't be the only one that's recognized the chilling similarities in rhetoric between the "protect our children" crowd and the same language we use to defend our property. I can't believe I have to be the one to say this, but your kids are not your property. They have, deserve even, the right to explore themselves safely and on their own terms. If that offends you, if you think your kids might hide something from you, ask yourself why that is before pointing fingers at the woke left or whoever today's boogeyman is. Members of the school board, your job is to provide an education for your students. Nowhere in that are you required to out them to their parents against their will. Nowhere in that are you required to police names or pronouns or force students into the wrong bathroom or onto the wrong sports team. As Gavin Grimm would no doubt be happy to tell you, you are in fact required to do the opposite. Your job is to educate kids, and part of that is letting kids explore themselves. Because guess what? We are here, we are queer, and we will not disappear. To that end, I want to both thank you for adopting Policy CH today and urge you to use these powers to overrule JBP. Today, you've come a long way. It's now time to finish the job. Finally, I want to mention that there are over 550 members of our community who care deeply about this issue. 550 voters who will not support anyone on this board if you continue to remain silent. And our members continue to grow. School board elections in Newport News are often fairly close, decided by fewer than 600 votes. Keep that in mind while you choose to remain silent. Thank you.
Blazin Bloom.
Good evening, honorable chairwoman and members of the board. My name is Blazin Buckshot Bloom. My pronouns are they/them/theyres. And I have been a proud member of our queer community and our trans community. Since the fifth grade, I've known that I was different. I knew I wasn't straight. I knew I wasn't gay. I knew I wasn't a man. I knew I wasn't a woman. I didn't know what I was. There was no term that I knew to describe myself. But I knew I was different. It took me, it has taken me over a decade to find some semblance of identity that looks and sounds and reflects my experiences in life of over 20 years. In college, I am proud to have been part, one of a few students to actually write policy for Old Dominion University on how to be a gender-inclusive campus. During that time, I got to read much on state law, federal law, Supreme Court rulings, past and present, and to read into both Governor Northam and Governor Youngkin's model policies. And I have to say, having read through Youngkin's policies, it is incoherent. The basis made to justify the policy that you all have adopted is to argue that gender is ideology, ideology is speech, and that students' first amendment rights mean that ideology cannot be pushed upon them, that speech cannot be forced upon them, and therefore that gender, identity, and expression cannot be forced upon them. And yet, this exact policy forces gender, identity, and expression by refusing to let students identify, express themselves as the way they feel in their hearts, the way they know they are, the way that their God has made them to be. Because we know that the First Amendment applies to young people and that parents don't make the final decision that young people do, that parents have a say to have a role and involvement in their child's education, but not at the expense of their child's education, as has been established decades ago with Tinker versus Des Moines during the Vietnam War. We know the harmful impacts these policies have. I come from the city of Chesapeake, and if you didn't get to come to our pride, our wonderful third annual pride, the Rainbow Youth Coalition was one of the sponsors, high-ranking, an organization that has started to take place of the Trevor Project, based out of Indiana. And from Indiana, they know about Chesapeake, Virginia, because after passing Youngkin's model policy, the amount of calls they get to their crisis hotline has risen exponentially. When you factor in our high school population, that 1% to 3%, 1% to 2% of the current population identifies as trans, that over, that nearly a third of all the high school students who identify as trans experience called in a year, within a year after the policy was adopted, having mental health crises because of the actions of our school board. Please do not repeat the same actions our school board has. Please learn, and please fix your past mistakes. Thank you.
Gray Lydon. Thank you for the phonetic spelling.
No problem. Good evening, members of the board. As a trans, non-binary college student who has been working with the local LGBTQ+ community since I was 16, I've, having supportive teachers and counselors who encouraged me to run a GSA back when I was in high school helped me to become the hard-working activist I am today. Having a school counselor who was able to talk about questioning my identity with me and knowing she wouldn't tell my parents while I was figuring out who I was, provided me a sense of safety that Youngkin's model policy would not, would take away- while I was figuring out who I was, provided me a sense of safety that Youngkin's model policy would not, would take away from, takes away from trans students. It also allowed me to process my own emotions and feelings before sharing them with my parents. Once I figured out my identity for myself, I was completely comfortable sharing it with my parents, and my parents were able to trust that I would talk to them when I was ready. After coming out, I was able to help create a safer environment in my high, old high school by showing students and teachers that LGBTQ plus students are just like other students who just want to learn in a safe environment. I would like to remind you all of separation in church, of church and state. Religious beliefs should not be influenced school policy at all. Provide the trans kids in Newport News public schools with the same opportunities to flourish and find themselves in a safe environment that I and many other students got to experience. Recind Youngkin's transgender model policies in favor of protecting students. Thank you.
Heywood Barnes. Heywood Barnes.
Good evening. My name is Heywood Barnes Junior. And I stress that because my belief is we need to put the daddies back in their place. I will identify myself as a daddy. My daughter was here a few minutes ago. She left to go to some, something more important. But what I want to share to this evening is twenty-five years ago, as of the tenth of this month, one of the educators saw my passion, gave me a book. Daddy, daddy, be there. And it reads part of it this way. Daddy, daddy, be there. When I dye my hair green, I cut it off. I pierce my ears and nose when my music rocked the house. Grab me when I'm one too far from home, too close to danger I cannot see. Daddy, daddy, be there. Another stanza. Daddy, daddy, be there. Let me sit with you. Let me hold your spotted hands. Let my eyes be yours, and my ears as well. I remember when you were there for me and asked nothing in return. Now I'm here for you. Daddy, daddy, be there. I love you. I'll leave this because only thing I'm saying in the school system as it is today, I have a fourth generation, two great-grandsons. I believe my influence will be enough to keep them safe. But there's some other children may not have that. So I'm asking those that love children, daddy, daddy, be there. Thank you.
Rosalyn Leonard. Rosalyn Leonard.
Good evening. Um, again, my name is Rosalyn Leonard. I hadn't attended upon speaking, but, um, so I didn't have a speech made up. But I do want to let you know that I appreciate you. I appreciate what you have to deal with and put up with. I want you to know that I am praying for you. I want you to know that I pray that you make wise, right decisions based upon truth and based upon, um, the safety for children, families in this, in this city. I am not a parent, I am not even from Newport News. I'm from Newport News, but I don't live in Newport News. But my nieces and nephews do. They are part of the public school system here. And I want them to be considered when these things are put in place. What I and my family teach them is the truth based upon the Word of God, and I want that to be reiterated in their life as well. I do know that you probably have a lot of difficult things that you have to hear, whether it be social media things, or things that have been said here, or things that, when people cross your path in public, and I'm sorry for that. I pray that, um, I thank you for being leadership and standing for what is right and what is true. And leadership does not always, um, cater, as I said before, to, to the opinions of man. But they have to, they have a higher authority, and I pray that you just honor that authority and you live by what you know is true and what is right. Thank you.
Ronald Lassiter.
Greetings, uh, Newport News School Board. I am Ronald Lassiter and give, uh, kudos to Chairman Lisa Sherrill's Law and Dr. Best and Dr. Mitchell. I'm just here to thank you for making a stand and adopting the government's governor's policy. Uh, I know that it took a lot for you to make those decisions, and I continue to pray for you. I am a pastor in Newport News, I have a congregation, I have youth in the church, and thank you for making the right choice, uh, not making our school grounds and our school classroom test labs, but let the test labs happen behind the closed doors in your meetings that you will bring about the best policy possible for our children. I love all people, I love all children, uh, as all of us have had people to be in our lives, our family members who may be transgender, I love them uh, in spite of, but I must, uh, adhere to God's word and what God's word say, and, uh, and let's not allow these things that happen, uh, on social media and around us dictate to us how we should, uh, carry our children or how we should raise our children. But let the parents be involved in those decisions and bring them into a place, uh, a, a, a close place. I know there's an answer somewhere, but I don't, I, I know that the right answer you have come to, and I applaud you today in your courage in making those decisions. Thank you.
Danielle Cousins. Danielle Cousins.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak today. I used to live in Newport News and now I reside of Yorktown. I have four children. I've been married twenty years to the same wonderful man. I'm originally from California. I grew up in a very liberal family. I was abused as a child in witchcraft, which is some that going on in this room. And I just, um, have freedom in Jesus Christ, and I've seen people healed and delivered and set free um, by the power of God, uh, for his love. And, and John three sixteen says, "God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son." That whoever believes in him shall not perish, but have everlasting life. And God is a holy God. We all have a free will. I am here by my free will, just so you know. Nobody made me come, nobody forced me. I'm here by my own free will, and we all have that free will to be able to, um, choose to live for him and accept that love, or choose not to. And, um, I just wanted to thank you guys for, um, allowing parents to, uh, have that God-given right and not have it a law in their schools to have to worry about their kids, um, not being able to talk to them or people talking to them, um, behind their back. Um, I personally witnessed, uh, a friend's, uh, daughter's name being changed in the system by the librarian without their consent. I personally had, um, a doctor, uh, it was actually under the former governor, um, who is a doctor, and, uh, one of the nurses gave my daughter, uh, a shot to stop her cycle without my permission, and they called it some kind of blood thing, and her cycle stopped for five months um, without my permission. And so I, I know what it's like for someone to try to take the, your rights and, um, for your children, and you just want to make the best for them. So I just wanted to, um, read Jeremiah twenty-three, and it says that my pop, my prophets and my priests are profane. They do not speak the word, they run, but they do not speak for me. They cause my people to err in their ways. And they seek their own, uh, evil desires of their hearts, uh, calling love unclean. And so I just pray, um, every curse spoken over you guys and over the school board and over children in the school to be broken in the name of Jesus. Every, um, threat, I just break it in the name of Jesus. I just speak suicide be canceled in the name of Jesus. I speak blessing over your family, I speak blessing of everyone here. I'm an evangelist, I preach God's word, I love everybody. And like I said, I personally, in the last month, seen a lady set free from being molested by her father. And God healed her, took her pain away, and set her free, and only Jesus Christ can do that. And he loves everyone in here, and some of them, it's their last chance to receive him as their Lord and Savior, and I just pray that for everyone in here. I pray healing and deliverance for every hurt and every pain is not God's will. Thank you guys, have a blessed day.
David Breckman. David Breckman. David Breckman, one more time. Cheryl Martin, Martino? Martino? Cheryl? Went to the restroom? Okay. Mary Voss. Okay, I'll just call the last three one more time and David Breckman.
With respect to the JPP, the procedure is not helpful. Despite the opposition's claims, it does not advance a parent's ability to be a parent. A trans person wants gender affirmation always, and will only not come out to a parent if they fear retaliation that if feared, often materializes. A right to know is subsequent to a responsibility to be trusted. Telling parents that they can opt, ju- just pull their kids out of ever using a bathroom on the basis that the same bathroom was once used by a trans person is naked fear-mongering, and it doesn't make anyone safer. In fact, two, the pro- the procedure is harmful. A trans person who sincerely and persistently dresses and engages in the manner of a gender other than their sex assigned at birth is at an increased risk of being a victim of violence when forced to use the bathroom of their sex assigned at birth, and has no increased likelihood of being a perpetrator. Three, the procedure is bad at being segregated on the basis of sex assigned at birth, except for any handful of edge cases in all laws where that's fundamentally not the criterion, fails to both be specific and to be an implementation compliant with the overriding Board Policy JB and Federal Title Nine that prohibit discrimination on the basis of sex, gender, or any combination thereof. Four, the procedure is not a shield. Lawsuits by Youngkin against the many districts rejecting his model policies have not materialized. If the board is worried about retaliation on other axes, know that blackmail does not go away when you do what they want. The procedure, five, the procedure is the board's responsibility. The law that started this was that school boards must adopt policies consistent with the model policies. So the superintendent's procedure both is the board's policy when we want cover and is not a policy when we want to say that we can't do anything. State law vests the elected school board with the op- with the responsibility to operate the schools. The superintendent works for the board, and Policy CH reaffirms that implementing policies is the responsibility of all administrators, which includes the board. Six, board, use your authority to overturn Youngkin's scapegoating of trans youth in JPP. Please take your courage to the next level and, and, and take a stand that involves a vote. Thank you.
It's Mary, Mary Voss? Okay, Mary Voss? There she is. And then the last one for the evening would be Cheryl Martineau. Okay, great.
Uh, hello, uh, Mary Voss, N N P S teacher, parent, and graduate. Uh, first I want to thank the school board for meeting with the N N E A about contract negotiations earlier today. Um, contract negotiations, also known as collective bargaining rights, give teachers and staff a seatable table to negotiate things uh, for things such as smaller class sizes, more planning time, more restroom breaks, um, seniority and job security and much more. Uh, teacher and staff working conditions or student learning conditions, so this benefits students as well. I also want to point out, when N N P S becomes the first or one of the first districts in Hampton Roads to give its hard-working teachers and staff collective bargaining rights, um, watch how candidates flock to this district. And watch how our teacher and staff turnover rates dramatically decrease. Um, this is good for you guys as well. Uh, N N P S employees, if you haven't signed your N N E A authorization card yet to help us win collective bargaining rights, please visit NewportNewsEducationAssociation.com and scroll down to authorization cards. Uh, next, on to Youngkin's discriminatory guidance. Um, first I want to thank all the pro-equality church clergy and pro-equality church members who are out in force tonight proving, um, that a single church or group of churches does not control what God thinks of LGBTQ plus children. Research-based evidence shows, and experts agree, that discrimination against LGBTQ kids is very dangerous to these children and youths. Um, items in Youngkin's cruel guidance, such as forced outing of children to unsupportive family members, not calling students by their preferred name, and not calling students by their preferred pronouns, are literally associated in study after study with serious negative outcomes, such as homelessness, self-harm, and suicide. Children's safety trumps far-right talking points about parental rights. Parents do have a say in our children's education. We elect school board members, we can call and email our school board members. Many of us are here speaking at a school board meeting, um, but that doesn't mean that, uh, kids should have their lives endangered by cruelly outing them to family members who may kick them out of the house, or may emotionally or physically abuse them because of that revelation. Um, speaking as an individual, I'd like to share an excerpt from the poem On Children by Khalil Gibran. "Your children are not your children. They are the sons and daughters of life's longing for itself. They come through you but not from you, and though they are with you, yet they belong not to you. You may give them your love but not your thoughts, for they have their own thoughts. You may house their bodies but not their souls, for their souls dwell in the house of tomorrow, which you cannot visit, not even in your dreams. You may strive to be like them, but seek not to make them like you, for life goes not backwards, nor tarries with yesterday. You are the bows from which your children, uh, in short, our children don't belong to us, they're on, they're their own people, and they deserve to be loved and respected for who they are." Thank you for your time.
It's French Canadian, it's Martineau. We, I say Martineau. Thank you for letting me come and speak to you. I want to applaud you that you any politician that attains to any level of, um, helping others, is what you do, you're servants to the people. You're brave. It's a confusing time that we're in, and I would like to applaud you and thank you that you would take this time to listen to us. I would like to speak you, to you today as someone who endured child abuse, as someone who knows what it is, that children, when they are given, um, the freedom which we've heard about, people want freedom to do foolish things, it's gonna affect the other children. Uh, which, I had that happen too. They say boys will be boys, but if those boys are bigger than you, what chance does that little girl have? Oh, when we let Pandora's box go open, what happens to this public? I love this country, and you do too. But what is happening, that we have to have electronics, what do you call? But what is happening that we have to have electronics, what do you call them, that the children have to be scanned to go into the schools? What kind of, what is happening to our cities, to our children that we, it's not your fault if you can't trust them? How, I don't know how anybody can be a school teacher today with all the things that are happening. We had a standard of morality in our country for 200 and almost 50 years that was unquestionable. People have flocked to America and still flock to America because it's a good nation, a righteous nation, that's been falling and failing badly. And the people who've come up here in the name of God, it doesn't matter what your religion is, we don't care what your religion is, but there is a simplicity of the Ten Commandments that we made the Alabama judge tear down off his wall. How much more simple can we get than don't steal, don't covet? Simply have a morality that applies to all. If we have no law, we are lawless. And if we are lawless, people like me now in my 70s, I, I feel like I can't be out at night by myself anymore. That's a shame. It used to be that, you know, when I was in school, that we were safe. Now we're not.
I just received a second card from Veronica Williams. I thought I called your name, but if I did not, you're welcome to come at this time. And that is the last card that I have.
Good evening. My name is Veronica Williams. I was born and raised in the city of Newport News, matriculated through the Newport News Public School System, and I own a law practice located in the city of Newport News. I want to thank the Newport News School Board members for taking a valiant stance for the families in our community. And I want to encourage you as a board to stay the course regarding the policies that resulted from your valiant stance. Specifically, thank you for approving policies that protect parents' rights to be involved in the lives of their children at school. Thank you for listening to the recommendations of our superintendent, which reflect the concerns of thousands of taxpaying parents, families, and students in this community. The fact is, the best way to protect as many children as possible is to involve their parents as much as possible rather than cutting them out. Thank you to our superintendent and to you as a board for approving policies that honor that principle. I've asked the board clerk to provide each school board member with a copy of CDC documentation setting forth facts about the benefits to students of parental involvement. It's dangerous to put a wall between children and their parents. That's why I'm glad you've done the opposite by approving policies that amongst other things, make it clear that parents must be notified and given an opportunity to object before their children are counseled regarding matters pertaining to gender identity. As I've shared with this board previously, the issue of requiring parental notification and consent prior to a school referring a child to counseling is especially crucial, considering a Virginia statute that from a practical perspective prohibits licensed mental health professionals from exercising independent professional judgment when counseling children on gender identity issues. Your current policies have kept parents involved in the process and empowered them to protect the precious, impressionable, and vulnerable hearts, minds, and bodies of their children while in the public school system. Thank you again.
This being our last board meeting for the school year, I'm gonna, it is late, but we need to say goodbye to our school board student representative. So if board members, if you would like to say your goodbyes, we'll, we'll do that and then we will adjourn. So I will start with Ms. Alger.
We're going to miss you dearly and we want to thank you for all that you've been and, and the time that you've served here. I know there have been many times that we've ran into each other and, and so much has, you know, I've learned so much from you. So thank you and, and continue to be the leader that you are. Thank you.
Yes. Ms. Seaman?
Sure. I too. Thank you, Erin, for being part of this, this board as our student representative this year and I wish you the best at Yale. It is going to be a great adventure, so I look forward to seeing all the wonderful things you do.
Mr. Hunter?
Hey, Mr. Lynn. Again, it's been a pleasure serving with you and I know you're going to do very, very great things. Again, great things are happening in Newport News. You're leading the way. I'll go get them at Yale. Okay?
And Dr. Best will just go straight on down.
Okay. Congratulations, Erin. I wish you the very best. Fully expect to see your name on television and a magazine and social media for some groundbreaking or business, big type of announcement, and I will be able to say that I knew you when. So I wish you much success.
Mr. Harris?
Well, Erin, congratulations on all the success. I know you're going to continue to prosper. I can truly say that whatever the kids' process has been to select and elect students that have sat in that seat since I've been here, whatever that process is, I would like to know, because they have, every student that has been there has been clearly top-notch in, in the school division. So, you know, like my, my grandmother used to say, you know, kids do get it right. So congratulations to you, okay?
All right, Erin. I won't, I won't embarrass you again. I know I embarrassed you at graduation. So I just say to you, very, you know, echo what everyone has said, extremely proud of you and proud to have been able to sit next to you this whole year. I know that Yale is the midway point of your journey. So this has been, you know, a journey that has started. For a long time, you've been working towards this goal and I know how hard you have worked, senior diligence, and I know that you're going to go on to do great things. It's the midpoint of your journey. I encourage you to continue in your education. The only thing that I'm going to ask of you is when you finish your freshman year, would you come back to Newport News School and come to our meeting and just tell us how your freshman year went for you? And I know you've got some things to say right now, so please, please go ahead and say what you got to say to the people.
Yeah. The only thing I wanted to say was that I'm grateful for being a part of Newport News Public Schools for the past 13 or 14 years. I truly think that, I'm truly honored to serve as the student representative and the co-chair of the superintendent's Student Advisory Group on Education. I have learned a lot about the efforts, about the dedication and amount of effort put in by Newport News Public School staff and school board members into each college, each student to make sure that they are college career and citizen ready. So I thank you.
You're welcome. The last thing I will say, if anybody asks why we do what we do, that's why. Meeting adjourned.